Nice.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
So, Business Services is here with three items.
Yes, here. Good evening, board members, Dr. Dixon and Mr. Gainer. We'll start off with the change order that is for the middle schools and Doug Myers will present that first topic for us.
Good evening. We have one change order that we're going to be requesting this evening and then we have an update for the budget for the middle schools. The change order that we're requesting is Change Order 2M for Monticello. It is for This item came up when we started the demolition of Monticello. We've talked about this a couple of times. We tore down the ceilings inside what used to be the cafeteria area and we found that there was a skylight structure that was abandoned in place and that the partitions did not extend all the way up to the structure. So, the teams looked at a lot of different investigations and studies as how we can come about bringing it up to code and this change order actually reflects that process. There was demolition that was handled as part of the allowance for this project and the scope of this work is basically to build new partitions and fire-rated doors and frames and associated work to bring this up to code. Just kind of have a brief slide here to orientate ourselves. It's kind of in the center of the area on the second floor. And then I have a couple photographs here where you can see the ceiling as we took out the ceiling tiles where you can see the light fixtures and the grid remaining and then beyond you can see this horizontal skylight that was left in place. You can also notice that as the drywall goes up over the 225, you can see the drywall as that extends up where the ceiling is that needed to actually extend all the way up for a fire-rated partition. See some more in this photograph. And then in this photograph, you can really see how it doesn't extend up. And then I have a slide here that kind of shows the overall scope of this but basically in blue is where the skylights were that had been removed and then the dashed red marks show the new fire-rated partitions. If you have any questions, feel free to answer those.
The red dashed lines represent the new hallway configuration. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, those are the places which need by fire code to go all the way up to the roof deck?
Yes. We looked at a couple of different options and it was decided to just tear out the partitions that were there and rebuild all new.
Got it.
And we're removing the skylight?
It's been removed.
Okay, that's gone.
Yes.
So, the skylight was not visible from the roof? They had covered over it? There was...
Yeah, it was actually the skylight from the roof had been covered over and then at some point during the history of the school, when they made that change, they abandoned the horizontal part.
See, and that wasn't reflected in any of the plans that we had?
Not reflected in the plans.
So, this was completely hidden to everyone but God? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think when you hear the skylight, you would sort of assume that you'd walk the roof and you'd see the skylight there.
Right.
It was between the ceiling and the roof.
Yeah, you can kind of see the roof plane and you can kind of see it in section. I'm sorry that that's so small. But the section, actually, the roof comes up like this and then there was a horizontal part that they must have, whether they put that in to keep the space more comfortable with heat and cooling. But this was actually the portion of the skylight that was left in place.
What would have been wrong with leaving it?
Code requires that you have to have fire-rated corridors.
I see, okay.
So, to have the appropriate separation between the classrooms and the corridors as you move through the space.
So, we really have no choice but to remove the skylight?
No, our real choice was how would we proceed and we did look at a lot of different options and this was the most feasible and construction-wise.
Okay.
Also have a kind of a budget update. You've seen this slide several times. We'll continue to show it just as the overall program for the middle schools and the numbers that we're really tracking are the hard costs and the soft cost contingency costs, which we basically have slated 1.2 million for each of the schools. And then as we're managing the projects, we're breaking them down. So, the detail of the middle school as we see it right now, I've highlighted kind of what comes out in that pale green are items that have already been approved and executed. The green item is the item we're requesting this evening and the blue items are items that we actually have received some pricing on that we'll be asking for at a later date, possibly be funded from another source and that's why they're in brackets. So, when you look at this, we have $1.2 million of owner contingency right now with what we're requesting tonight. And then with the items that we're forecasting right now, we still have over $600,000 worth of contingency. Just so I can be clear again, the forecasted is just a ballpark number. When we get pending, that means that we have a number that we have from Turner that are some better, more accurate numbers and then executed is actually after it's been vetted out with the A and E team and it's actually a request. Then we also have for Roxborough, we had a couple of change orders that have already been approved and then we have similar items that we're anticipating are going to be coming up. So, right now, we're still have about almost a million dollars of owner contingency that we're seeing as we go forward. But it's early on in the project, so we're about where I think we need to be.
For Rox Middle, was there any additional cost incurred for removing that composite flooring? Because I don't see that line there. I just see a placeholder for the new leveling that has to, that will be coming down the pike later. Because we have an actual expense for the compo floor at Monte but not at Rox.
The extent of the compo flooring removal wasn't as big at Roxborough, so I think we're holding $30,000 as an estimated cost for that.
Okay. Thank you.
The other source of contingency that we're tracking for the owner is the soft costs and so right now, we have executed several items for the soft costs and we have nearly $70,000 left. So, as professional services are required as we come up, we'll have that. And that's pretty much the conclusion of what I have to present tonight.
Good.
If you have more questions.
Well, I mean, let's get a motion. Kind of a motion to approve this change order and then we can discuss it.
I motion that we approve the change order.
Second?
Second.
Do we have any other comments or questions for Doug or the team?
You know, I guess my only statement is this is where we are. There's nobody to blame for this. This is what they found when they took down walls. So, as far as I see it, you know, we don't have a whole lot of choice.
Well, I'm glad as far as in our decision-making process, we see everything from a big-picture perspective. You know, I think the high school project was highly complex and I think the board didn't get to see all that on a very regular basis. He just saw individual change orders. What I like about this process is we see what this impacts as far as the entire budget goes. We can move on from there. So. Any other questions, comments?
My only question is at this point into the project, are you comfortable with where we are in what we have left in our contingency or is this, are we at this point not in a good place?
I'm comfortable with where we are. Well, we want to be in a position where we can provide as much, you know, that the district wants to have and I think that we have a lot of things that are being requested out there that we have that we're going to be able to take care of. We know that we're going to find some more things but we do have, you know, we're working closely with Turner and Moody Nolan to go ahead and resolve those and for where we are in the project, I'm comfortable with where we are.
I agree. We're, there's a lot of things that are still on the table, but those are all district requested changes, the ones that we'll be bringing forward. Hopefully the kitchen at the next board meeting, the pricing for that. We're waiting for Turner to review it and we'll present that to you.
Okay, thank you.
One last comment. We know that we have to build up to the deck, the stairwells and that will be coming also down and that's another, you know, fire code issue which we don't yet have a number for. So, that's going to be the next one. That's an unforeseen circumstance.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to call the... Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
We also have baseball fields.
Thank you, Jack. I'm going to pass Tara Pesta from K2M Architecture to join us. Tara is the architect that has been working on the baseball field project for us and we are here tonight to present a change request on the original project. So, there's a list of items that were presented to the board for a total change request of $85,362. I can go down the list on each item if you want to hear some sort of rationale for it. That'll be helpful.
I think that would be helpful. I mean, this was already, it's a pretty high-profile project. Members of the community are really interested in it.
Right.
I see a lot of...
Little history. That's why I'm asking Doug as our stay here because this, pieces of this will tie us into the original high school project. The original high school project did have the baseball field and softball field as part of the original plan and for financial purposes, at some point, it was removed. We, of course, need to put baseball and softball back so our high school teams can compete.
Can I just add a little bit of clarity?
Sure.
I mean, we didn't remove it to save some money knowing, I suppose we removed it knowing that we'd saved some money in the end, but the issue is what was originally budgeted by the other contractor was just hugely expensive.
It was a lot more money being invested than what we're investing now.
Exactly. And we just needed to just write, just close out the project with Gilbain and move forward with something new. We knew it was going to cost a certain amount of money which we had budgeted for. But if I recall, it was almost $2 million at one point?
I'd have to research it.
One of the plans that we saw was...
And it was changing the configuration. We had softball, baseball back-to-back with a combining sidewalk. This project left the girls' softball, I say girls, but softball field in its original place. We're using the backstop. The intention was, and you'll see one of the line items, so the original intention was to reuse the infield and just spruce it up, you know, change out a little bit of the top dressing and add some more and we'll discuss the issues that we ran in there, into there. The baseball field, we did change where home plate is at. So, that redesigned the whole layout and we had to increase the fencing and so on. The original pricing, as we go down this list, a lot of these items are because of the high school construction and I'll speak to those briefly, okay? So, the first, I shared pictures with you to help you understand a little bit of what the reason was behind a couple of these. So, the reason that these are, some of these are actually here is as we developed the plans, you know, we gave the athletic director and the coaches the opportunity to review them and provide feedback. We incorporated what we could into the plans and always we tried to share back and forth as much as we could. Well, as we went and went out to bid, we actually had additional requests after we received the quotes for the project and the first one is the backstop. You'll see, and I put on the note the original backstop. It's not the one that was there at Heights High School. That's the original one that was into design. It was a traditional baseball backstop. There was a request to change that to, if you flip over to the back page, that is, and I did look at this myself and did a search, this is the new approach to not just college but actually high school competitive baseball. They're raising the backstops up straight, which allow for more play behind the plate and is supposed to prevent more of the foul balls going deeper out into the parking lots in this case.
So, it's actually higher? It's hard to tell from this?
And again, these are just renditions. It's not exactly what we're getting.
Angle over.
Roughly, it's roughly about, it's about twice the size, the height of a normal, but it also doesn't have the little roof that projects in.
It's going to be 30-foot high.
So, that foul tips that go straight up, instead of hitting the fence that leans over and basically being out of play, they're still in play and we have a significant amount of room behind home plate that will now be a significant part of the game. So, it'll really be stretching catchers, pitchers. There will be more balls in play in this field than there would have been in the original drawing. It'll be a much, much higher level game.
So, you see that on your list, the 30-foot-high backstop was number one for $32,250. Number two was on there and Tara was very good at beating on the contract a little bit to get that taken off. So, we're not using number two. The credit for the original backstop was $15,000. So, that change is noted. Then we have a 12-foot-high by 6-foot-high double-drive gate and that's on Goodnor. What that allows to do, which there is access for the grounds crew, but they'd be in the parking lot and the grounds crew works during school hours. So, to negotiate around traffic, I overlooked it as actually the grounds crew that said, hey, is there a way to change this? So, their recommendation was we, they can pull up on Goodnor, unload their equipment, cut the grass and not worry about trying to navigate through cars in the parking lot.
So, that would be roughly halfway down the block?
I think that's...
Like between the two fields, yes.
Between the two fields here, okay.
The locks, again, were brought up by the actual building head custodian and by the grounds crew also. There's been numerous attempts at theft on the other side of the, where we have storage underneath the stadium and these type of locks for $500 were a way to prevent those thefts from occurring. Install two special, that was that one, add filter fabric under all limestone dugout cages. That was another request by the grounds crew that if we did that, they just think it'll prolong the life of us not getting weeds up through there.
And that number has dropped, I noticed?
Pardon? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Tara did a phenomenal job from our BAC meeting in the comments.
Sometimes you just have to beat up on people a little bit, right?
Actually, that's, if you don't mind, that's really worth pointing out because the Bond Accountability Committee Commission that reviewed all of these numbers and works to review all of the facilities, finances, you know, we reference them periodically but it's really worth pointing out that at this past meeting that we had last week, the makeup of this committee is so extraordinary in terms of people's backgrounds and the variety of backgrounds. So, number two was a originally, it now just says not used, it was originally a fee for hazardous duty pay because of the high fencing. There's 30-foot high fencing behind the backstops and then also down left field where it's going to be a very short left field. And a number of people at the Bond Accountability Commission have a background working in these fields and they just said that seems absorbent, not absorbent, exorbitant, and so really pushed back on those numbers and it is my belief, you probably know better than I do, that that pushback from the Bond Accountability Commission may have very well led to some of these price reductions. So, to the folks, the neighbors who serve on the Bond Accountability Commission, I just really think, you know, bravo and thank you.
The extra strip for topsoil and limestone to cages made wider. So, we widened the batting cage and the pitching cage. So, that required some additional foundation. The drinking fountain, I shared pictures with you. We did go back. Both Tara took an opportunity to review other options and I actually went on and looked at different water fountains myself. This is a top-of-the-line water fountain, but if you look at comparisons and what we're doing is we're making a normal drinking fountain and adding an ADA-required water fountain too. So, you have two different fountains and then we needed a hose bib. There's, even if you went with a concrete one or a stone one, they're similar in pricing. There's not a lot of give anywhere unless we went with a single water fountain that would serve the average person. It wouldn't be ADA. We'd have to have another one someplace else or off to the side of it. But we understand it's expensive for a water fountain, but it is in line with what is available.
And where will that be located? I'm not seeing it on the ground plan.
It's not on the plan at this point until you hopefully approve it, but it would be near the sidewalk behind home plate, kind of between, again, between the baseball and softball fields, but near the bleacher area for the baseball field.
So, where that concrete walk thing is?
Yes.
Okay.
So, are we going to get any pushback because this is much closer to the baseball field versus the softball field versus, you know, a high...
We try to locate it in the most efficient way possible. So, the actual water source is at the driveway near Cedar entrance.
Okay.
So, it's really the least distance that we could trench. It is accessible to both fields and I know there's obviously always questions and input from the community of which I'm a member. I live down the street from the school. So, you know, I have a vested interest in making this project good and also efficient cost-wise. So, you know, I think that this is one of the only things honestly that will be an amenity to the community at large. The rest of the fields are going to be pretty locked up, obviously for protection, maintenance of the surfaces. We can't let people run their dogs on there and whatnot. But the drinking fountain will be out in the open. So, you know, I know it's a popular walking path with the track and whatnot.
So, basically, it's efficient because the trench and it's in a location that doesn't necessarily have to be locked. So, if we actually tried to split it, we tried to make it right between the boys' field and the girls' field?
It's pretty close to that right now.
Right.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, pretty close to that.
And again, if we would have stuck with the original plan and flipped the softball field, it would be in a perfect location for both, but we did have to tie into, only access for water was out near Cedar for us to tap into and bring it down the road.
Okay, I get it.
We have the dugout benches. The original intent was to reuse the benches that were in the baseball field. They were not long enough and they were bent and damaged enough to where we, it was just smart to replace them in a new project. We have the discus net and a discus circle. We're part of, if you look in the outfield, right field of the softball field is the spot that took Tara a lot of time in playing around it to find out where this would work at. But it allows the track and field competition on the other side of the building to actually have a place to do the discus. In the original plans, this was not in there and it's required. We could either purchase it through here or go back to athletics and say, you need to buy this. But it is, was supposed to be part of the original project, so we're just putting it back in where it belongs. The pricing is consistent with what we expected to spend either through athletics or through this project. So, that's not unrealistic. We have changed a fence wire gauge from number six to number eight and it takes it from a thicker one to a little bit thinner, but we checked with grounds crew, Kelvin Robinson. He actually checked with fencing company and they concur that that's not necessary to have that heavy of a gauge fence going up that high. So, we took a deduct on that. This is where we get into a little bit of the issues that we're going to deal with with Gilbain. But we had to reshoot the grades for the softball field and the reason, if you were to go out to the outfield of the softball field where they put the well field in, there are now depressions that look like swales as you go through the field and it's probably from the earth settling where they did all these bores. So, we also discovered that we feel that the original contractor did not give us what we expected in the project, which includes the proper amount of topsoil. As you walk the field, it's, the topsoil is just not visible and there's rocks within the field that have to be managed. So, Doug and I approached BSHM Architecture and we developed a letter that we're going to, we discussed it with our attorney to sort of bring this up. We're meeting with the contractor tomorrow and we're going to talk about remedies. Part of the problem that we're going to run into is we currently have Roma on-site to do this work. Even if the Gilbain subcontractor says, hey, we want to come in and make this right, it's, we have to manage how we're going to handle that. At some point, we expect the next few items to be either taken care of by Gilbain or we will have Roma pick it up and we'll withhold money from Gilbain. So, you'll see the shoot the grades was to get the right slope that we have to maintain by adding more soil. Grade the softball field to level out the depressions. That's 8,400. If some topsoil is required, this is a low number. It's 2,000. I believe we're going to need more, but that's what Roma gave us, is what they think they'll need to bring the outfield up to standards. And the softball infield, remove four inches of existing dirt and replace with clay, 23,092. That is right in the heart of all the well fields and again, the ball diamond clay had a certain thickness to it and it's not even present anymore. So, in essence, we have to rip the, it has to be torn off, ball diamond clay put down and it is a substantial amount of work. Extra supervision, the contractors asking for that, for the amount of extra work that they did not plan on doing, which if this is all approved, it's a substantial amount of work that they have to now perform on the field.
And they did agree that they would track that time hourly?
Hourly.
And, you know, hopefully there will be a little bit left over that they don't use up and we won't be charged for that.
If we approve a change order for the total amount, what happens should you be successful in your claim against Gilbain? Because we're looking at what, 16,000 plus another 23,000?
The board resolution speaks to part of that and it's all legal ease here. I struggle through it myself. But squires worked where it could all be withheld, again, from, through discussions with Roma, that we're, you're approving the ability to authorize a change order. We still have to work through the process, who's going to be responsible for it. It also, if you read down near the bottom of the resolution, my concern was, is if we move ahead with Roma, we're not going to see anything from Gilbain immediately. This is something that's going to be a process. That, I believe we're going to need more than $2,000 worth of topsoil. He still provides the ability for me to do a change order. Say Roma were to come back in and say, you need $6,000 for topsoil. I can approve a change order without having coming back to the board under the first authorization that you provided for the business director to make changes to the project within 10% of the original price.
Can I jump in a little bit?
Sure.
So, with the work from the high school that is pretty much in dispute and has been in dispute, they've been put on notice that it wasn't accepted and then their contractor came back and they said, we'll do this rock hounding and we're going to go ahead and fix it. They did something that's not accepted. So, this notice...
So, the first remediation wasn't acceptable?
Right. Exactly. So, the important part is as we manage this, that the district is not in a position where they're paying for it twice.
Right.
It's equally important that we keep both the projects going. And so, the way that we're doing that is we've put Gilbain on notice. We've talked to them about this and everything else. They have not been able to get their subcontractor to perform. So, now we tagging this to the next level where we get the notice for Gilbain and their surety. So, that we're putting everything in place. So, then they have a right to go ahead and say, okay, we're going to come out, we're going to get the work taken care of. They do that, that's great. If they don't, we basically put them in notice. As the owner, we have the right to go ahead and to perform the work that wasn't completed and we will backcharge you for this.
Because we're on a time limit. We can't wait for the argument to go on through various levels.
And this same discussion we're having tomorrow includes the trees. This company's responsible for the trees. This company's responsible for the trees and this company's also responsible for an entrance way that, uh, a, a concrete repair was made that I'm personally not happy with and Doug's not happy with, um, that we need to discuss. So there's items that are on the table that we're going to just see where they're at tomorrow.
So the trees that you bring up, that you mentioned, these are all of the trees that were planted in association with the renovation project?
I have a tree, uh, person that we use, uh, our more trees, a licensed arborist. We, I asked him to come out and test the soil around a tree basis and he said it's, uh, not the proper soil composition to have those trees grow successfully. He believes it was just dirt that was on site that was just used to fill the holes and that's his assumption from what he looked at. So our expectation is that the trees are replanted and he told us that happens all the time on projects, uh, that it's, it's not an easy process, but it could be done. They can pull the trees up, put the proper soil in and replant them.
Because without the proper soil, the trees aren't going to get the nutrients they need.
We already had two.
Rubble is not tasty.
Two of them, two of them have died, so they need to be replaced.
Okay.
Yes, well, we have had community members expressing concern about like watering the trees, like staking the trees.
And we, and this has been on our-
And we know this has been a dispute.
This has been on our discussions with, uh, going back months, so it's, we just need the contractor to perform.
So I'm going to ask something because I don't know. Why don't they just put the little green bags around the trees to make sure they're watered?
I think they were actually there the first month.
Right.
Yeah, they were there and then they were taken off. Um, at, at some point, it, it's just like the grass, it's, the contractor's not responsible for watering the grass. It would be, if we want to go out there and water it, we, we should do that. Um, it was just not in the contract for them to provide watering.
So, um, items twelve and down basically are, um, items that make the softball field safe in terms of level and also, um, up to the expected quality in terms of the infield.
Yes.
I've been a little worried about the wellfields. They're going to continue to settle and you sort of see the lunar landscape now and it'll continue to settle even after this work is done, is-
Isn't it also a matter of the type of soil that again may have been used from on site?
Right. There, there's a, a, a letter that BSHM wrote that we're going to, again, the attorney reviewed and we're going to be sending out that lists what the expectation was. I, I agree, there could be additional settling that we'll have to manage after this is all done and we would have to bring in topsoil. I, I think, do think if we handle it properly now, uh, it will mitigate some of that settling in the future, but right now it, you can walk out there and actually there's a good six to eight inches in some spots where it's different than where it should be.
Okay, so just to sort of summarize a couple of things here. So although this is an approximate eighty-five thousand dollar request, really fifty of that is new stuff approximately, and I'm just ballparking thirty, yeah, okay, sorry. Thirty-five thousand is possible money that we can claw back from Gilbane.
Unless we can, we can also get Gilbane to get their subcontractor to perform and that money would just then be paid out out of the high school project if they were successful in doing that.
Yeah, but I think too, what I think, I forget which one of you said this, but I mean, we're under a budget, we're in a timeframe, we've got contractors out there, we've got people that, I mean, we need to get this done, so we may need to spend this money with the expectation that we'll get some kind of credit in the end. So with that in mind, um, and I'm sure it's, there's not, because this could end up being a legal matter, um, whatever you can send us from our lawyer and the law, and the document that gets sent to Gilbane, would you share that with the board just so we have some information?
Yeah.
And-
Yes. And you would get a copy of that. I, I'm just waiting for the final-
It's fine.
Attorney. Let's move ahead with that.
Well, we need to talk about trying to get this kind of stuff into board docs, which, which, trust that's going to happen. I, I think the letter is something that is, um, we need to keep.
On purpose.
Yeah, I think that is privileged. We need to look at that because we know this, this, this could lead to, you know, further dispute and-
Now, we do plan on for, uh, the September fourth meeting. We've asked Gilbane to actually come in and give a, a summary of where we're at at the current project.
For the high school.
We feel it's better that they come and answer questions from you and, uh, it, it's going to be an opportunity to update you on our eleven-month walkthrough and the extension of some warranties that we required and they provided and, I mean, they, and they've responded to a lot of the issues that we had and they've been taking care of a lot of the issues that are, were on the table. So we just want to give them the opportunity to come and present to the board a, a summary of where we're at.
So, I mean, the trees are going to be a big deal. It would be helpful if they could be sure to include that in their presentation because I think we need to point multiple community members to whatever, point to that.
And you'll get a presentation, this is actually a list that we're working off of that I have here, uh, and it's what they're managing, but there's a spreadsheet that we track all the issues that are beyond the completion and we'll share those.
Good, okay. Um, just so we don't proceed too further, do I have a motion to accept this?
Can I ask two questions?
Okay.
Okay. The water fountain, so we will have this little spigot down there?
We need that for watering.
Right, okay, good. I wanted to make sure we had that because this picture didn't have it, so I'm like, okay.
It's an add to the unit.
And then, um, is the water fountain, it's going to be out in the open, is there any kind of warranty on the water fountain and what's the length of that?
It'll be typical standard warranty with the unit. I don't know if that's probably a year warranty.
Probably.
And we, it's just another, it'll be a unit that we have to winterize every year, but-
I was going to ask, we need to shut off the supply in the winter.
We did it with, actually the football field has, uh, a sprinkler system over there we have to winterize.
Okay.
This would just be included in.
All right, thank you.
Do you have a motion?
A motion that we accept these, uh, this change order.
A second.
Any other comments, discussions?
Nope.
Would you call the vote? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Tara.
I guess we have to stop doing all the discussion before the motion.
No.
Yeah, are we doing it out of work?
Robert's going to be very upset with us.
So we have a technology plan update.
Among other things.
Among other things.
Okay.
And generally working the camera is now on camera.
Hence the jacket.
With the board's permission, I would like to speak a little bit about E-rate first. We had some questions on it and I think it'll help the whole plan as we go forward. Of course, they turned my computer off, so let me get it back on.
Uh, before we start, I'm a little, I want to remind the board, um, that this, um, technology is a part of strategic plan goal five. Um, and if you, I think they may have it somewhere under objective four, the district would create a future-ready network infrastructure that delivers adequate speeds for classroom technology for the next seven years. Strategy A, increase classroom access to educational technology devices and, and improve connectivity. And strategy B, enhance district network infrastructure. So that's part of the work that we stated we wanted starting in two thousand fourteen. So I know they're going to speak to some of those pieces as well as our, um, educational programming plan. Okay?
With me tonight is Eileen Tusk, the vice president of our company, and Mark Brown, the network engineer and sometimes cameraman. I may also call on Dr. Bauer back there and Ms. Bird to help me in some questions that I may not be able to answer. So E-rate, E-rate two point O is a newer version and that's in place right now. It started four years ago and they wanted to give all schools the ability to receive reimbursements on equipment. Prior to that, nineteen ninety-four, they made it so that high poverty schools only would receive E-rate funds. Everybody got money for what was called category one, which is internet access, but category two, which was equipment, like switches and servers and access points and cabling, was only available to ninety percent schools. Cleveland Heights was a ninety percent school. We don't have ninety percent free and reduced, we have seventy, but that correlates to ninety percent discount. So back in the day, when Mark Brown needed a server, somebody got a new piece of software, he could buy a five thousand dollar server for five hundred dollars because he had a ninety percent discount. So over the years, we got quite a few servers and we're trying to get that down now so it's sustainable because when this plan came in place, we no longer get that ninety percent discount. Now it's down to eighty-five and everybody gets a chance to gain the money. So things have changed. So now with two point O, next slide, everything's toward wifi. There's no servers allowed anymore. So the servers we had were condensing because we kind of had a server farm. We had almost seventy servers in our district and Dr. Dixon's filing because she knows that. And my fear when I first got here nine months ago was if we lose half of them in the next four or five years, that's going to be several hundred thousand dollars. Don't forget, we bought them for ten percent of the cost. No longer can we get ten percent of the cost, now it'd be full price. So a server could be five to eight thousand dollars. So we try to get away from that. So right now, we're in that position where we can get access points and we have the best. We can get cabling, we can get switches, we can get UPSs to support those devices only. The UPSs can't be used for the phones, the switches can't be used for the phones. This is all about internet, internet access. Category one gives us a ninety percent discount on internet access to the district. So we pay roughly forty thousand dollars a year for a full gig of internet service, but we only pay three thousand dollars of that. So that's a pretty good discount, which is why we have a gig. And we've never gone over, Mark, we said the other day, six hundred back-
Six fifty.
Yeah. So right now, we're way under that, so we've never had a bandwidth issue. We've been able to full bandwidth all the way through.
Even when you went on to, um, Google, Google Classroom?
Google testing, we've never had bandwidth issue. We have plenty, we've had outages where maybe the power went out, but as far as a bandwidth issue, the highest we've gone is six fifty out of a gig. A gig would be a thousand.
And that's just, you know, keeping in consideration, you know, redundant points of access? I mean, I mean, if, and if you're going over this later, I don't want to-
Uh, yeah, talk about redundancy, you, you brought that up and I can go over it right now real quick. We did buy a Dell EMC backup. When I first got here, I was not satisfied with their backups. They were taped and they were hard drives and they weren't very good, uh, not very usable. So we turned around and went with Dell EMC, which gives us a full backup at Delisle and a cloud backup at the high school. Now, you can have cloud backups anywhere in the world, but it makes more sense for us just to go to our high school because the chances of both buildings going down is remote. So this way, we have it there, it's cheaper to go that way and it made more sense to go that way. So we have actually disaster recovery built into that, so if a server went down, I can spin up a server almost immediately with the backup and the backup would actually act as a server. So it gives us redundancy across the network. We should never be down, and I shouldn't say this, but more than five or six minutes, unless there's a power outage.
So what I was thinking of is just redundancy as far as internet access. So we're in the middle of doing testing and our Time Warner connection breaks, do we have AT&amp;T, although AT&amp;T is part of Time Warner, do we have anything like that going on right now?
Mark can answer that question.
So in E-rate one point O, they paid multiple vendors for internet access. When two point O came out, the allowance to have redundant connectivity, redundant firewalls, those kinds of things went away. So we were paying close to somewhere twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars for a redundant connection. We made a choice at that point to give it up because we would have had out-of-pocket all of that. Um, the number of times internet has gone down has been maybe around a dozen in the last three or four years, so it doesn't happen very often, um, but we currently don't have a redundant connection. We can reevaluate that, gather up the cost and then make another decision whether that's something we'd like to do again, but we currently don't have a redundant internet connection.
Well, I'll let the experts and, you know, Dr. Dixon, you know, make that determination.
It's not that we wouldn't like one, just try to be budget conscious.
Yeah, I, I think the concern is during testing this past year, it went down and it wasn't down because of us, it was down because of issues with the state and their vendor. So, um, you know, here we are, you know, kids are trying to test and it's high stakes testing and here we are, they can't access it because it's our fault.
I don't disagree with that.
So I'd be curious to see, you know, what, what, what your peers and other school districts are doing. I mean, if this is an issue where no other school district does this, it's a lot easier for us to say it's not necessary.
Very few schools, if any, have redundant internet access that I know of. And I'm familiar with Shaker and Mayfield and several of those districts now have directors that worked with me.
Okay.
So very few, I mean, the cost factor's a big thing.
Oh, yeah.
And again, a lot of internet access goes back to the same place. If it goes back to NeoNet and they have a problem from NeoNet to Columbus, then it doesn't make a difference if we have redundant if it comes out of the same location.
Okay. Sorry if I took you off track, so just-
Uh, right now, all public and private K to twelve schools are eligible for wifi funding. Uh, there's a hundred and seventy, a hundred thousand school sites nationwide that use it. The highest for category two is eighty-five percent, the lowest is twenty. And this goes again by our free and reduced numbers, as long as we're over seventy, which we have been, we'll be okay. Uh, it's a five-year funding cycle, so right now, we're in starting the fifth year in September. So with the fifth year starting, if you don't use your money after that, it's going to go away. We have no idea what the next plan's going to be. They haven't hinted at what they're going to do. I feel strongly that they always will take care of internet access. Equipment probably will because they started us on this cycle and to take it away, a lot of schools couldn't afford to keep it up. I mean, look, we paid fifteen percent for the last couple of years, before that, we paid ten percent. If we had to pay a hundred percent for our district for the number of servers, switches, access points we have, it would be hard to stay on top. Right now, we have the best access points, the best cabling and the best switches. When you look at those things, you have to put them all together. If you have cabling that isn't that good and it's put in the nineteen nineties, it's not going to help you get the speed to the access points. And the same thing with the switches. Somewhere you'll get a bottleneck. So we have the top switches, the top access points and the best APs and that's kept us with the progress we've made. Uh, next slide. Here's what's eligible and I went through most of this already. We only use it for access points, a LAN controller, we actually do have a LAN controller, so we use it for that. Uh, software necessary to handle that, we've used some of it for that, cabling we've used all the way across. Caching servers, we don't have. Firewalls, we get through NeoNet. Network switches, we have in-house throughout our district. Routers, racks, just all things are eligible right now. And as we stand right now, we don't have a lot of money left. We've wisely spent it. The high school, we spent all our money when we put in the new, refurbished the high school. That all went to cabling. At Montessoro and Roxboro, all their money is going to cabling. I just took the elementary schools and I added switches and cabling to all the elementary schools. So even though they're not being refurbished, they're set up to be top of the line because right now they're doing testing also. Uh, those schools have Chromebooks in every classroom now, they have iPads in K-one. It's completely changed, so we need to make sure they're as fast as the other schools.
Next slide.
This is the matrix. I mean, if you're less than one percent free and reduced, you still get twenty percent. But if you go down to the seventy-five percent, which is where we are, you get ninety for category one, you get eighty-five for category two and that's your percent discount. That ninety percent helps us a lot because we save, like I said, thirty-five, thirty-seven thousand dollars a year on internet access. One more slide.
So what do we do when we don't, all our kids essentially eat for free?
Correct.
So how do we do that measurement? Because usually it's based on, well, no, I should just, I, well, I'd be curious to find out since we're not asking our parents to fill out any kind of paperwork.
We were able to prove that we have a certain amount over a certain number of years and then you can file for the whole school and you don't have to go through the, how many kids you had. I mean, I've been in districts where they want to move up a little bit, we do sibling matches because a lot of times the high school kids don't want free and reduced lunches. So they see if they have younger brothers or sisters, if they do, then they're in the same household, we, we put them on. Sometimes you can add on yourself and I've done that in districts, but here we were But here, we were at that 70%, and we've been at there a number of years, so we were able to combine it together.
I think you also want to know what happens, because we were at the 70% because of a grant that we have. So once the grant goes away, we gotta figure out what are some other things that we're gonna do.
Yeah, because this would be a perspective.
Yeah, we're 100% because of the grant.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I knew where you were going.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
We don't, we don't wanna lose.
I was about to shut up. Just, just, just drive the car.
One thing they took away was cellular. They used to do cellular with category 1, and cellular's expensive. We have seven PRIs, Mark? Six? Somewhere in that area.
Four.
It's about the district?
Four or five.
Okay. So a PRI gives you 23 concurrent calls at one time. So that gives you phone lines. So we were at that number, and they've taken that money away. So now, we pay full cost for all phone services, which is fairly expensive. I'll be getting into this later, but I'll mention it now, we had a problem with AT&amp;T. You probably saw my $200,000 savings and wondered, what's that all about? We made an E-Rate decision two years ago to go from AT&amp;T to Spectrum, because the PRI cost was almost half. Good decision. But when May, April, May came around, the contract ended in June, we'd switch over to Spectrum in July. When April, May came around, Spectrum and AT&amp;T were arguing about, you're not giving it the right format, we're not getting it on time. It went all the way into September, October, without us changing. So what happened was, we had to stay with AT&amp;T. Now, we didn't E-Rate AT&amp;T, we E-rated Spectrum, because we thought they'd be up there July 1st. So once you're out of contract, you're in trouble. They can charge you legally whatever they want, and they did. They charged us 50, 80,000 a month for eight months, and it got up to, when I got here, it was about $300,000. So I got on the phone, and I called AT&amp;T, and I called Spectrum, and I said, what you're doing is legal, but it's not ethical. I will go to the paper, I'll go to wherever I have to go to get it changed. And after about 100 phone calls and moving my way up the ladder, we got cash back from AT&amp;T and Spectrum, which is very unusual. We got them to reduce some of the payments we were supposed to make. And I just did a file substitution with E-Rate, so I'm going to ask them to substitute from AT&amp;T, or from Spectrum to AT&amp;T for those first six months, so we get more money back. Because I can do a file substitution, because we, Spectrum never had the lines, so we didn't use them for eight months. So if I can do a file substitution, I get more money back. So, okay, next slide. And I think I'm probably, this is the phase out things I said we no longer covered, and I think we're okay to go into the slides now. Any questions on E-Rate? Makes sense? Right now, like I said, we don't know what the next step is. Oh, I'm sorry, I wanna go over this a little bit. So here's what we did in 1718. The high school, we had $216,000 allocated because of the number of students we had. We had to pay 15% of that. We still have $14,000 remaining. I'm not gonna spend the money just to spend it. If there's something we need, a new UPS or something pops up, we could apply for it this year. But again, I'm not gonna spend it just to spend it.
And that money rolls over?
Money disappears.
Ah.
So if I can't find something, we will. But again, we'll have to see. 15%, sorry to pass up. If I go shopping at 85% discount, I buy a lot of stuff.
Now, cabling is obviously the highest cost because of all the labor involved. Otherwise, you're just talking about objects.
Uh, that, and you know, a lot of things. We just had a vendor that came in and did the cabling at the elementary schools. They didn't do a walkthrough, which was very unusual. Usually, you wanna see what you're getting into. And right now, you know, there's pipes that go through the floors that carry the cables, and a 5.5E cable, which has been around since the 90s, is what we have. We went to 6A, which is probably four times as wide. So they had to drill more holes, they weren't happy. But I said, you know, you have to do a walkthrough. Why would you not look at this? And sometimes you have...
So they bid the contract without doing a site visit?
Yes. And once you bid an E-Rate contract, you can't change it, you can't ask for more money.
Right, it's on them.
So, just the way it is. So the elementary schools, we, we wanted to make sure they were up to date. So we took their 5E cable that was put in the 1990s, probably. We changed it to 6A, which is the fastest cable out there. It carries tremendous speeds, it works with our switches. And we did that to all the elementary schools. Like I said, Roxboro, Monticello, we saved construction money by using E-Rate funds, and that money, they'll roll into something else. And if you look down at the bottom, I just wanna put down their internet access is $39,840. We pay $3,984 a year for internet access, which is really a bargain.
So there was nothing, no changes there to Delisle?
Uh, I could not E-Rate Delisle, because Delisle has students that come from other schools.
It's part of the high school.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, it's part of the high school, so you can't count those kids twice, so you can't do it with Delisle.
Alright, thanks.
But Delisle's in pretty good shape, there are knocks, so you know, they've got most for good stuff. The other thing we did this year is, we went back, we had some money that was audited back in 2003. They said, we don't know if you can do what you're trying to do. And I wasn't here then, none of us were here then. Mark was here, Mark's been here for a long time. So back in 2003, we asked for something, they denied it, and here it is, 15 years later, they said, hey, we were wrong, you're okay. So we got back like $40,000. And what was nice is, back then, you could do switches. So we got domain controllers for every building, which is what hands out the internet access, and that's what we needed at this time. Then we also went to 2009, and got another about 100 and some thousand dollars in 2009, 2010, for money that they all of a sudden approved for us. So we made quite a bit this year. Next year, we probably won't do a lot of filing for E-Rate. Uh, we just don't have much to go, we don't have much money left. But we will file for the internet access category 1, and that'll probably be it.
So we have a lot of people that are very sensitive to their community schools.
Yes.
And if someone came to me and said, hey, you didn't spend all the money you needed to a Noble, because there's $9,000, well, close to $10,000 versus a 50 that you could've spent, what would I tell them?
And a lot of it had to do with the way the buildings were constructed, what kind of work they had to do when they got in there, the number of cables. Some of the buildings have more classrooms. But the fact that I did spend the $9,898, we may turn around and say we need some UPSs there next year. We have the money to spend, and we have four or five months to make that decision.
But it's not that we're intentionally not spending on that.
Correct. Again, I don't wanna spend money just to spend money.
Fine, okay.
Okay. Next slide. We're into the update. As Dr. Dixon said before, our strategic plan goes what we're working towards. Our objective number four was district would create a future-ready network infrastructure that delivers adequate speeds for classroom technology for the next seven years. 100 meg was a big switch, six years ago, seven years ago. Now, we're up to 10 gig switches. So we have speeds that we never managed, imagined before. Strategy A was increased classroom access to educational technology devices and improved connectivity. Strategy B was enhanced district network infrastructure. I think we met those goals. I think we're there already. The only places I still wanna make sure, Delisle, we have to work on a little bit, but as far as the rest of the schools, we're in great shape. If the board was to say, here's a million dollars to improve your infrastructure, I'd probably give $950,000 back. There's just not that much left to do right now. And what we have is sustainable. We should be able to keep this going on for several years. I think the next E-Rate situation will be some of the one we just had, because schools couldn't go on without it. Uh, we are 1:1 with devices in our classrooms across the district. The high school now has 2,100 Chromebooks and carts for 2017 and 18. Middle school, we had 1,600 existing Chromebooks and carts will be replaced in 2019, 20. Elementary schools have 1,025 Chromebooks and carts in grades 2 to 5, which went in this year. Grades K to 1 will be using 612 existing iPads and carts. And that's mainly because we don't feel the K-1 kids are ready to do much keyboarding yet. So the iPads are much easier to use. Those carts have 12 in a cart, so they're in good shape. The rest of the buildings all have 25 to 30 per classroom, so there's a Chromebook cart in every classroom with 25 to 30 devices.
So when you say 1:1, just to be totally clear, one device for every student in the classroom?
Correct.
Okay.
We don't have any classes that I know of that are larger than 30, so we're in good shape there. And then, the elementary school, going 2:1 iPad isn't a bad situation at all. And we used most of the iPads from Garrity and split them out among the other schools, so we didn't purchase new iPads. Staff laptops.
And there's none used in the preschool program.
You know what? I don't know that.
Yes, there are.
There are? Thank you. Dr. Bauer would know that. Yeah, I don't. We're actually looking at Google tablets, which are a little bit cheaper than iPads and do similar things, don't have all the apps yet. Uh, Dr. Bauer brought that up, and we purchased five to take a look at, and we're trying them right now, so...
Okay, thanks.
So the staff laptops, the high school, we purchased 170 Dell laptops, actually back in 1718. We purchased them last year. We had issues with them. They're the ones I showed you, I was bragging about, you can make them into a tablet, tablet function didn't work. So we went back and forth for several months with them, and I finally said, look, either we replace them, or we're not gonna do business. So they replaced all those laptops just in the last month, free of charge. So we have brand-new laptops again for the high school and administrative staff. The elementary staff just received this week 225 new laptop tablets. The middle school staff will get theirs next year when they move into the new refurbished building.
Does the staff get trained on their new equipment?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
We do a tremendous job. Dr. Mrs. Gold has some great PD, and I, I teach some of it. Dr. Bauer does, Mr. Brown does, and they get a lot of training. Infrastructure updates. I talked about quite a few of these already. New servers in each building, that was paid for with E-Rate funds. Consolidation of existing servers, E-Rate is also gonna pay for that. We're going to something called VMware, which runs multiple platforms over one server, so that'll help us save money and just be more functional. Uh, we're eliminating our HP 3000. That's a server that's probably 25 years old. It's, it's huge, it's like four or five foot high and three or four foot wide, and it just has been around forever. It has staff data, student data, and financial data. It runs on a very unique program that no one has anymore. It's called QSS. And we have to do something, because every time it crashes, everybody loses a heartbeat, because if we don't get it back up, we have to find another one of those servers to put the data on. So right now, we're paying to move those servers, or that data, over to a different platform, so it's more usable and much more affordable. And we pay, I think, $30,000 a year for the software. We'll put it just on a regular platform, and it won't cost the same. So that move's being made now. Uh, UPSs at the elementary schools, those are emergency backups. If servers go down quickly, or anything goes down quickly, it tends to take a chance on not coming back up. Uh, cabling at all elementary schools, we talked about increased existing access points. We actually use the ones from, in the elementary schools, we use the ones from Wiley. And new Cisco phones in the elementary schools, Delisle and the board office have replaced the 10 to 12-year-old phones that are there. Since the high school and middle school now have new phones, it makes sense to have everybody do it. Sorry, I gotta move my slides along. One bad thing about slides I found out is I can't hide my notes, so that's why we've got two computers going. Projection, projection units and interactive TVs. The high school has new Epson 695 WI projection units, they're newest ones out there. They allow for connectivity between student devices and interactive whiteboard. Excuse me. Middle school will have 75-inch interactive TVs in all classrooms when the school opens in 2019. Three years ago, I wouldn't have bought interactive TVs. Uh, I've been part of a lot of OFCC projects, I've built five districts throughout the state of Ohio, and today, they're all starting to go to TVs. They have more durability, they last longer, 20-year warranty instead of a one- or two-year warranty. Uh, they're very clear, they're just very easy to use, and they're easier for staff to train on, so I, I think that'll be a good move for us. Cost was a little more, but again, it's just one that the kids can take, whatever their, whatever device they have, be it a computer, Chromebook, or whatever, and they can show what they have up on the board just by going on the wireless.
And we talked in the Bond Accountability Commission about how that change is going to affect a little bit of infrastructure because of the way they have to be installed on the walls.
They are heavier.
Yeah.
Uh, they're not as light as a smart board, without a doubt. Uh, we actually haven't got the pricing yet, have we? We're waiting on it. We're hearing $400, $500, which wouldn't be bad. It's still, they're gonna be screwing in the same wall, they may have a little more support. Uh, they've got a big bracket it goes on, but I don't see it being a big cost difference. Uh, the elementary schools, I hope as we go along, if we have the funds, as their projection units start to go, especially the ones in the ceilings, we should go to TVs. And you can mount those a little bit lower, and they're a little bit safer and easier to use. We can actually have five or six kids go up to that, and have 20 touchpoints on interactive TV. They can all draw at once, they're great to use. Cost savings, I think I covered most of this. Spectrum and AT&amp;T, I covered. Uh, Black Box, Mark did a great job this year. We usually pay about $125,000 in a smart net warranty for all our switches. And by managing that warranty a little bit better, he knocked it down $34,000. BPI. When we switched over to Google, we had all those exchange emails. We have to keep them. So we had to pay BPI $20,000 a year to back them up, which I thought was a huge waste of money, but we had to have it, we had no choice. Uh, Brian Bailey up there does records requests all the time, and it's sometimes a full week to do one. Uh, so we saved $20,000, because that money and those files will now be switched over to EMC. Iron Mountain, again, $10,000 savings in switching to Dell backups, because they picked up our tapes and stored them for us. So we don't need to do that anymore. And we did, Mr. Petex, he still here? He's a great auctioneer, you probably don't know this. We had a plan to get Riblabor equipment, and I called some vendors around the state who had bought stuff from me in the past, and he became the auctioneer, and we sold our 1,400 iPad 2s for $70,000, which was a great find. And we saved $70,000 on that. I'm not sure where the money went, Scott, but I know we saved it. And E-Rate cost savings, I told you, we had some money we saved in 2003 and '09, that shows it. Now, when you look at those numbers, we pay in 2009 and '03, 10% of those costs. In 2017, '18, we paid 15% of those costs, so there's still some cost to us. We also pay an E-Rate vendor to do the work, so there's some cost in that, too. We're still getting at least a 75% to 80% discount, so it's definitely worth it. Any questions so far?
The equipment going into the middle schools.
Yes.
Are we, are we able to use our discount to purchase that?
No, because we use all the money for cabling.
Okay.
But we did have the old money that we used for the switches.
Okay.
So that worked out pretty well. That old money just came up this year, and our vendor said, look, I think they're gonna approve that, and actually, it got approved yesterday.
Some of the switches, not all of them, but you know, four or five of them, it's money off the top.
Yeah. It was, uh, for them, $39,000, and for us, it's...
Great. You just have to install them really slow.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, future rate technology plan. I think Leland go over that, and then I will answer any questions we have on the questions that were brought to me, unless you wanna do those next. We had some questions that the board presented that dealt with technology. Or should we do the technology plan?
I know Jody sent some, I sent some, too.
Yeah.
Would you like to repeat those?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be helpful.
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, whatever you guys think is...
Uh, yes. Get out of the skate. Go to the one that says, uh, first one right there, should be... And I think these were by Mr. Posh, right?
That's mine, yeah.
Uh, since techno, and bold is the answer, since technology touches everything in enterprise, when we talk about technology, what does it encompass? For example, considering Frank's role as he's responsible for Infinite Campus, Google Classroom, or website, or just the hardware infrastructure that drives the technology. So what I answered was the IT department handles hardware and software support, it touches on staff devices, student devices, networking, desktop support, smartphones, phones, and inventory. Frank handles budget, ticket management, purchasing decisions, warranty decisions, E-rate decisions, sustainability of hardware, vendor meetings, updates of cabinet and technology decisions, future rate technology plan, and phone decisions. Infinite Campus is handled by Allison Byrd. Google Classroom's handled by Dr. Bauer. Website is handled by Scott Ward. Okay with that? New board, okay, we did the E-rate going down a little lower. Ms. Senior will need to discuss. Multi-year technology budget will be part of the future rate technology plan. I've got a pretty good handle on it already, but we wanna put that in our plan, and we'll be skipping that out within the next six months. When we do the, when Leland goes over the plan, you'll see it's kinda broken down into seven gears to cover different areas. And one of the gears is budget, we'll be covering that right away.
Okay.
What cycle we end to upgrade, replace our technology? I told Scott the other day, I think, that we're probably gonna be thirty percent down on our budget next year. Because we have, through E-rate and through other methods, we've purchased equipment we need to purchase, and I don't see, we'll probably get laptops next year for the middle school, and after that, there's not a lot of equipment to be purchased next year, so we're in pretty good shape. As far as redundancy, I addressed that. Disaster recovery I addressed, and security I will talk about later. Multi-year budget will come on our future ready.
So, okay, so when a teacher gets a lap, a notebook?
Laptop, yes.
When is that? How long will that, what is the lifespan of that notebook?
Four to six years, depending on the laptops. Ones we just purchased were very good, so I would say four to six years.
Okay.
Chromebooks, a little less. With a Chromebook, you're buying a two hundred and fifty dollar device, with a laptop, it's more like an eight hundred and fifty dollar device. But the Chromebooks are great buys for Google Schools, 'cause they don't cost a lot, they don't take a lot of wear and tear, so it's, they're better for us to use. Most schools are using, most Google Schools are using Chromebooks.
Well, and, and I think that makes all the sense in the world. I mean, one of my concerns is, you know, the next step on our agenda is the five-year forecast, so I'm just trying to get a better sense of, okay, do these, you know, every three years, do we update them? Do we, you know, push it off to four years to save some money? Maybe you can't do that. Just trying to get a better sense of when do we have to replace these things. And, and it's just not the, the devices that a student or a teacher has, but it also kinda comes down to, let's say, routers at the high school. So all that stuff was replaced at the high school. When can this board expect when another request? I mean, that technology usually only lasts three, four, maybe five years, especially as speeds increase and demand of the network goes.
Yeah, you don't know what's coming down the pipe.
And, again, TVs, there's gonna be a time when we're gonna be faced with, okay, we're gonna take out those Epson units and the, at the high school, and we're gonna put TVs. So just, I mean, this is just a little forward thinking, you know, we know, no decisions are gonna be made, just, just trying to get a better sense. And it seems like, you know, there's gonna be a plan that's gonna be coming out in the next six months?
Yes.
Or so. I mean, it would be helpful to have that kinda information in the plan.
That's one of our top items that come out of that plan. That plan will carry on for two years, two to three years, but the budget is a big part of it, and Scott's been talking to me about it, and I know that's something that's on my plate to get done.
Good.
High school, middle school, elementary schools, we talked about. Wiley is fine right now, it'll get us through this next year, and they have decent technology. Their cabling is not the six A, their access points though are the ACs, and they do have decent switches there. So right now, they're good. We'll probably recycle a lot of their stuff back into the district, and the one we don't recycle, Mark shaking his head, I guess we'll sell.
That's all the old legacy equipment from the original high school that's running the Wiley campus.
Okay.
But maybe George can auction it off.
Maybe.
Disaster recovery, I answered already. Going down a little lower. You had a lot of good questions, by the way. I had to pull in Mark and Brian to answer this. Go up a little bit higher, you went a little too low. Number of help desk requests, okay, slide down a little bit.
Ooh.
Time with that, huh?
It's me, not the, it's not me, it's the device.
Okay, we had three thousand seventy-three tickets submitted last year. It's a lot of tickets. A lot of it had to do with, you know, simple things. Sometimes, like, we got the new laptops, and they have a different aspect ratio than the ones they had before. So every teacher in the elementary schools, I'm sorry, I didn't think of this, the picture was this big. It wasn't big enough. So we'd walk in their room, we'd get the remote, hit aspect, and boom, everything was back to normal. But it was something that probably generated seventy or eighty tickets, and that was taken care of very quickly. We don't have, in our current version of our school dude, software that tells us a time on task yet. It's supposed to be coming out, and when it does, we'll have a better idea how long it takes to fix a ticket. I tried doing a little scenario today, but something's wrong, 'cause it came up with a hundred and six days, I didn't wanna tell you that, 'cause I know that can't be right. So it's usually, on most things, it's a day or two. We look at tickets right away, but some things are put on hold, we have to wait for equipment occasionally. Chromebooks have been, as good as they've been, they've also been an issue for us. We have a lot of breakage. A lot of keyboards get popped off, fifty bucks. Screens get broken, fifty bucks. So that's been an issue. We repair them ourselves, but we have to order the parts. So we need to, we, Dr. Bauer and I have talked a lot about accountability on the staff as far as knowing who has what Chromebook and when, and they should all be doing that. It's not always happening. That's something that has to happen. Because right now, teacher goes in there later and somebody's Chromebook's broke, she doesn't know who had it before, and that shouldn't be happening. We should know who has that Chromebook each period. So if something does happen, we can go back to them and say, "Look, you broke it, you paid for it."
As a teacher, I can tell you, that is virtually impossible.
I know.
And that goes for Chromebooks, it goes for textbooks, it goes for anything. When you've got a room full of thirty kids, I can spend my entire class period monitoring who has which Chromebook, or I can teach a lesson. You know, it's, so...
And in the past, that's true, but Dr. Bauer has a new system. You wanna explain what you're doing with the Chromebooks? There we go. This is very good. This is new. She found it.
Good evening, school board.
Hello.
Since we placed the carts in the classrooms, we have had a protocol that we've asked the teacher to follow. Much like we've always had teachers assign textbooks or calculators to students, we do ask them to number their students, one through twenty-five or thirty, and then to assign a device to each student. So all of the devices are labeled with numbers, and so Mark is number one, Leland's number two, Frank is number three, and when they come into the cart, they are expected to use that device every day.
Until they break it, and then they go and steal someone else's.
Well, again, it's the protocol, we're hoping, we are hoping for the best, but we have reminded, recently reconnected with the principals, we've reminded them about the procedures, and IT did a great job this summer of going through and making sure the carts were ready to go for the classrooms.
And again, it's the best we can do. I realize what you're saying, I was a teacher for thirty-five years, so...
Right, yeah, I know things break.
Yeah, I think when Jody and I were walking through Monticello, we noticed, you know, some of your people going through and cleaning all the machines and going through them, so it was just really, I mean, stuff you would never think would need to be done, but it's like, oh yeah, duh, someone's gotta do it, so, and it does get done, so...
Kids like to peel off anything and put on a device.
Oh, yeah.
They always peel off the stickers, and that's always been a problem. Next question, again, with school dude, we're waiting for that new update to come out, and at that point, we should be able to determine how long it'll take to do fixed devices. You asked about cloud backups, and I explained what we do from Delisle to the high school, which is basically a cloud backup. Even though it's not going out to somewhere in Columbus, it is a cloud backup, and if the Ethernet goes down between us and Columbus, we still have it between the schools. So it's just a better way to go. The Google Suites we have, we have apps, Chrome Device Management, User Management, these are all cloud-based resources we have. Aesop, which is our attendance system, Blackboard, Collections, I'm not familiar with Collections. Can someone tell me what that is?
That's one of our ELA adoptions.
Easy Bridge, IEP, we have several cloud-based, and you're seeing more and more cloud-based. You don't buy too much anymore that goes on a machine. Most things are cloud-based as you go along. And Clever, could you fill us in on Clever, Dr. Bauer?
Sure. We're really excited about our teachers and students having access to a program called Clever this year. And Clever is really like a portal that allows the students and teachers one single sign-on, so they sign on with their Google username and password, which they already know, that's what they've used to log into their Chromebook or other district applications. Once they're logged into Clever, any programs that we've paid for or adopted that currently support Clever, such as Study Island, such as our new social studies adoption, TCI, and many, many others, our new online curriculum, Edgenuity. Once you've logged into Clever, you can then click on the apps that you need to do your academic work. So it's really like one-stop shopping for education, and there are no more excuses. And we all know, even as adults, how many usernames and passwords we have, so again, it's a single sign-on. It's really exciting, and the teachers are, are thrilled. I think the students and the families will really enjoy it as well.
Can students log into Clever from home?
They can, yes. In fact, if you go to the district website and go to the Academics tab, Clever is one of the, it's the third link down. I just trained all of our Option students today on how they can access their curriculum twenty-four seven, and so it's very simple access. Study Island is in there, which virtually, well, grades two through twelve in our district have access to Study Island, so they can, you know, access Study Island at any time. And then depending on your grade level, your school, your content area, the apps will vary depending on the student. So it's very customized for the student and the courses that they have been assigned to.
And if a student changes classes, for example, and there's a schedule switch, and, "Oh no, I'm not gonna take Forensic Science, I'm gonna take AP Bio Two," or whatever.
Yes.
How does that, who, who makes that correction in the software?
That's a great question, Ms. Lewis, because actually, that's one of the most exciting parts. There's no more waiting for someone to make that change. So overnight, it does, Clever does sync with our Student Information System, Infinite Campus. So that information, any, any changes that have happened to our students today, so we had a new student come, a student dropped a class or added a class, like you mentioned, all of those changes will be synced in Clever overnight, so tomorrow, the students will have exactly what they need.
So the pinch point is making sure that Infinite Campus is updated?
Yes.
And then Clever will go and find it?
Yes, correct.
Okay, interesting, thank you.
That works for online textbooks, the whole gamut.
So every day, more and more companies are coming on board with this. We've been a subscriber, for instance, to Brain Pop for our K eight students for many of their video tutorials and learning exercises, and they just sent us an email last week that they now have Clever access. Over the summer, Edmentum, Study Island came on board. So more and more of the tools that we use are in Clever. Today, I inform the teachers about Clever, and everyone's emailing me. I mean, in about five minutes, I think I got twenty-one emails from teachers, very excited, 'cause they all want their apps that they use in Clever. So we are, our IT department and Brian Bailey has been working with me, and Betsy Gilmore and Allison Byrd, just on, we're all working as a team to get as many of these applications in Clever as possible. But once they're set up, it sort of works automatically. But we are waiting on a few more companies that we use to come on board with it, but all of the major ones have been set up over the summer months, so, like I said, our new social studies adoptions, both products, Social Studies Weekly and TCI, we're already Clever users. Our new online curriculum, Edgenuity, uses Clever, Study Island. I know I'm forgetting a lot, but I'm trying to picture the login screen in my head.
Well, presumably, once there's critical mass, all of the different publishers will find that they need to be part of it.
Yes, I think that's what we're finding.
Okay.
That's great. We talked about the one connection to the ITC, Neonet. We've been with them for...
Four years now?
Five years? Yeah. And they, they do a good job, they're down in Akron, it doesn't make any difference where they're at, they could be in Cincinnati. It's instantaneous wherever they're at. So it used to be local, and it's not local as much anymore. Staff training, we talked about, but I just wanna say again, Mrs. Gould does an excellent job. We have a lot of teachers loving what's going on, whenever you have any training going on at the high school. Core software applications. The ones I put down there at the bottom, OnBase, a lot of databases, student transcripts, IP records, HR info, that's all in the cloud. VersaTran, the transportation software you talked about, is in the cloud. Our phone system, device and voicemail. IP Session, which is our internal nine eleven and paging software, Identifoto, which is our visitor management, are all cloud-based. More and more people are going to the cloud because Internet access is just more secure. You asked about Infinite Campus. I said, this Byrd would be the contact on all things Infinite Campus, is a solid SIS and has been stable from the technology side. There's a data warehouse server internally, Ms. Byrd, could you speak to that?
So the data warehouse system that we use is Illuminator. You've seen screenshots of how some of the data displays, but it is used for our in-house or in-district assessments, as well as a warehousing space for our external assessments, like our state test or ACT and SAT results.
And I just see what I forgot. I was holding that one till the end, the weaknesses, and I didn't do it.
We'll get the data to Dr. Dixon, and then we can talk about it.
I'm sure there's some things we can think of.
Yeah, okay.
Current initiatives we're working on, cybersecurity. I sent Mark and Brian to a cybersecurity seminar last year, and it was amazing what these, these guys could do now. I mean, they had, the FBI was there. I mean, Mark, you wanna tell the story?
So they did this, this demonstration, and typically, when you have a mobile device, you, wherever you go, you go and find the hotspots or whatever, and you try to connect to get free Internet to speed things up. And so about halfway through the session, she said, "Tell me how many of the people connected to whatever the facility's wireless was." And everybody raised their hand, well, ninety percent of them. And she said, "Great, that's my hacking network." Because there were two names, just very, like, if you ever go to like a Hampton Inn that says Hilton Honors or Hampton, you know, one little character off, or adding a number or something like that to it, allowed her, if she wanted to, she was from the Attorney General's Office in Columbus, allowed her, "I could scan any of her devices and pull up any information you have." The other example she gave, which was really interesting, is, and I should have, maybe the next time we come, we'll bring the video, it's about five minutes, but she's, there's actually a convention in Las Vegas for hackers, and it's, it's the official side of things where people learn to get better at preventing hackers. And they did a demonstration, this lady sat down with a journalist and said, "Tell me one account, any account you have, just your general information," you know, and worked off his name, and she called a cellular company, and she impersonated his wife. "Hi, my husband asked, I need to get some account information, I'm trying to sign up for a loan, we need this, that, and the other." And in less than five minutes, she had not only changed the password and the access and locked them out of his cellular account completely, but she had gained all the information about it. It's called social engineering, and we don't think about it because we very freely talk to people about things, who we do, where we work, what we do. You have enough of those conversations with people and you don't think about it, you've given them enough information to gain access to all kinds of things professionally, personally, and it was really enlightening. Brian and I were like, "Holy cow." It just, so, you know, we came back, and I think we had one more PD day after that, didn't we? I think there was one more PD day, and we tried to get as many teachers in as we could and share that story. And it goes back to simple things like, when you get those emails, even though our filters try to prevent as much of that as possible, "Hi, you know, this is AT&amp;T, you know, we're verifying your login, please click here to sign in." Soon as you click there and sign in, they've captured a bit of your information, and you do that two or three different times with different information, now you have enough to really do some damage. So those are the things they train us about.
With our PD days this year, we're planning on doing some cybersecurity lessons, 'cause there's a lot of things people don't even realize, like, cameras right now, they could all be looking at you. A lot of people, a lot of people put tape over them. And that's just not being paranoid. They could see you sitting on your bed at night, before you go to bed, doing your work. It's not hard to do for those.
Not ours, we don't do that.
Yeah. Next things, process management, software procedures. Dr. Dixon and I have talked about this for quite a bit, and it's something we're looking into. I've done it in a few districts. We did come in this year with a program called Final Forms, are you aware of that?
Yes.
Has it worked out well?
Well, I have two athletes, and every year, I've had to do reams and reams of paperwork, and it would've been nice to set it up fourteen years ago.
So I think it's working out well.
The same information every year, you have to do the same, type it in, write it.
So we're trying to get more processes and how we do things right now.
And we use the same platform for our online registration, too.
I looked at that online earlier today, and I was quite impressed.
And field trips, probably, and... Young man in Chagrin Falls just came up with an idea. He built a company out of that idea. He's done a real nice job. He's in probably several hundred schools in Ohio, and he's branching out to other states.
Good for him.
Is there a possibility of using that or something similar for the medical forms?
Well, Infinite Campus does a lot of those things.
Yeah, I misspoke.
Yeah.
When I thought about that, it's Infinite Campus we're using for online registration.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, Infinite Campus...
Sorry, IT, I mean, sorry, Alice, your team, I'm thinking, wait a minute, I misspoke. Final Forms we use specifically for our athletic department.
Yeah, that is our platform, and we don't wanna move away from that, so... They come up with new ideas all the time, and eventually, they'll be able to do the whole process management piece. But we're gonna investigate that this year, just 'cause we do a lot of paper shuffling. Dr. Dixon and I were just talking a little while ago, I get, I have to check payroll for all my texts, so I get, I log in, I see what happened the last two weeks, I print it out, I say okay to pay, I walk over to the board office here, I give it to the secretary, she types it back in, and I don't get it, 'cause that's just way too much paper pushing, and it should just be submit, she has it, it's paid. But we're going to e-file, which I think is gonna be a lot better system, and that will make a lot of changes. Okay, we have one more set of questions, I think. If you go to the next one...
Did you get to cover all these?
Uh, there's more.
Festers facilities.
To Delisle.
Hold the knock at Delisle.
Uh, E-rate projects, elementary school cabling, middle school cabling. Oh, I'm sorry, Delisle's what we wanna talk about. I know it's, wherever you have your knock, it's a big move to move it again, because Because the cost of moving the cabling, moving the equipment, buying a new cooling system, new generators, new power distribution, we could be up over a million dollars to move our knock to the high school, middle school, wherever else. Because don't forget, right now it's a hub, the knock, our knock over at Delisle is a hub and it goes out to every building we have. So then we'd have to, if we made it to high school, we'd have to make all those cables go to other buildings. So we'd have to change seven or eight cables and those are expensive to change. And we have to change the cable coming from Neonet. So to make that move would be very expensive. I know that's something we've thought about. I don't know an easy way to do it. It just, it's a very expensive proposition to move something. I don't know if you've been in our center, but it's almost as big as this room. And it's got a couple of giant air conditioners and cooling systems. In fact, there was, the water leak we had in Cedar about a week ago, week and a half ago, we lost our air conditioner and the alarm didn't go off. We came in the next morning, just because of the equipment in there, that room was 98 degrees. We had to open all the doors, turn all the fans on and then call our company and say, "Why didn't we get a warning?" Because we should get a call as soon as it reaches 75. But that's something we're working on. So yeah, I, go ahead.
So there was other vendors, I believe 911, there was other things located in Delisle besides us. Are they gone now or are they still there?
So the, it was originally what was called the INET, originally put in by the cable company 25, 30 years ago. And they gave fiber optic connectivity to every single government building in Cleveland Heights and University Heights. So that includes every Cleveland Heights building, skating rink, pavilion, fire stations, police stations, University Heights, same thing, as well as all of the public libraries in both communities, as well as all of our schools. And every one of those sites has four strands of fiber optic cable coming to Delisle. Currently, we use it and the city of Cleveland Heights uses it to interconnect their buildings. University Heights has not leveraged it and the libraries, I don't believe are using it anymore. They were but have stopped. But we are tied very tightly to Cleveland Heights still. In fact, they keep bringing in more things. And now like all their security cameras that sit on the Taylor Road-Cedar intersection, all that equipment for that area dumps into Delisle and then they remotely access it at City Hall.
I see. So we're almost acting like a data center for them?
Little bit. It's mostly connectivity as opposed to systems, but yeah.
Did University Heights never use it and they pulled, or did they use it?
The libraries did for a little while. The University, University Heights never really chose to do it, but they don't have a lot of facilities. They have City Hall and the fire station, police station. They're all closely tied together. I'm sure they have fiber between those three buildings. The only other building really is Purvis Park. And at this point, they have chosen not to do that.
Okay, thanks.
But it's there.
So I'd be curious, I mean, we are going to have a facilities conversation and it's going to include Delisle. I think knowing exactly who's using that and not using that is going to be beneficial.
We could probably issue a good cost estimate on what it really would be if you're interested.
Well, I mean, we know it's going to be a lot of money. So I think that's all we need to know for now. I just want to know who it impact. If it impacts us versus the city, that's where things, because if it impacts the city and we pull it out from underneath them, there's going to be some cost there. So I think we just need to have a little bit better idea of what we're dealing with.
We can put a list together of every site that's connected through us.
Okay. That'd be helpful. Next page. These are from Jody. Does the technology department obtain input or feedback from teachers and staff as part of their planned decision-making? For example, do teachers and staff weigh in on equipment decisions? Is there a technology committee or focus group that helps provide input? Excuse me. Do they have the opportunity to discuss their needs, what equipment is purchased and installed? Kristy, I'll start off with you and then I'll go from there.
Okay. So we do have building-based technology leaders and there are two to three from each building and we come together about every four to six weeks. And that's one of the primary groups that gives input about how things are working on a day-to-day basis in the classroom. These are actual classroom teachers who are meeting with me. And so it's great to hear their feedback. That's a good way of communication. So I share information with them. They take that back to their buildings. And that is also the group that we tap when we are piloting any type of new hardware, new software. They are giving us critical input. So for instance, several years ago now, when we were first figuring out which device would the high school teachers be receiving, we had high school teachers who were tech leaders. We had a few high school administrators. We had a couple of ed services members. They had a rotation. Every Monday they got a new laptop. So they tried out six different devices throughout the course of a quarter of the school year or so. And so they were giving us input. How is this working with my students? I can't connect this to the smartphone.
By the fifth machine, they're hating everything, right?
It was a big learning curve, but you know, these are people who enjoy that. So they also help us with just trying, you know, different technol, different software that we want to purchase or even thinking about the boards or the projectors. So those are people, those are the first people we tap. Would you mind trying this out for us? It may be a large-scale thing such as to commit to that pilot, you were also committing to completing a Google form for each device. And so we were really compiling those results and really sort of studying those. And other times we do more informal pilots. Hey, I have these devices. Will you try them out and let me know how they work with kindergarteners? So that's kind of a first-level team that we go to. And then another formal team that meets to give input is certainly the administrative team here. So we have a technology coordination team that meets every other week here at the board and it's several members of Dr. Dixon's cabinet. And they come together and they'll review requests that come from building levels. So if a building wants to purchase something related to technology, it goes through that team. And so they fill out a decision framework form and several questions on the form really require them to analyze, how does this proposed purchase tie in with the strategic plan, with their building level action plan? And then as a team, we discuss that. We may, you know, actually go back. I know Mrs. Gould is great about asking those probing questions about, to even get more details of how it connects to everything that's going on, that big picture view. So those are two groups that really give very useful feedback and help drive the decision-making.
Great, thank you.
Any technology plans or ideas that I have go through the cabinet. The cabinet gives me a yea or a nay, whatever I bring up.
So what is up there is just kind of like a description of what the tech leaders do. And this is primarily a volunteer position. So they get compensated a little bit for meeting with me. But these are people who are already the go-to people in their buildings, you know. If they, if someone has a question, they know they can go to Mrs. Smith down the hallway. So these are people who just love technology and love using it with their students.
The process for updating phones and voicemail accounts. Mark?
So this is a process we continue to look at and try to refine. We get information from two key areas right now. Key players, administrators, central office people, those typically come from either HR or department head saying, "Hey, I've got a new site" or something like that. The challenge where we really struggle a little bit is that people ending up in the buildings. You know, teacher goes from site A to site B, we kind of find out about that, but we don't necessarily know where they end up as far as a classroom till almost school starts or after school starts because the principals are still shuffling people. So we rely on the building admin assistants in the offices and/or the principals to notify that, us about that. So we continually, every year, talk about ways we can make it better. It's a little bit slow and I wish we could speed it up. One way we've done that in the high school and middle school is that teachers no longer have a voicemail attached to their telephone in their classroom. So they have a dedicated phone number that goes right to a voicemail box. They could change buildings 12 times. The phone number stays with them as long as they're here. So that's something that we may consider moving out further into the elementary schools, which would cut that down. But as I found last year, we, the last batch we did was at the middle school and the lists were completed, but it didn't filter down to the teachers thoroughly. Many teachers knew, but few didn't. So my guess is that they weren't paying attention when information was given to them. But, so we have to work on reinforcing that. But that's how we do it 99% of the time.
So to answer your question, it's pretty manual.
Okay.
It'd be great to have a process, but we'll see if e-file has that where HR hires somebody and boom, it knows what five people to go to next and then what five people to go to next till the process is completed all across the board. And that's not done in two main schools, but a lot of them are looking at it because it's a cost savings.
Yeah.
People's savings.
Thank you.
This is a great question. I really have been here nine months. I didn't realize we did all these things with getting hold of parents. I can understand the confusion. If you have a 10th grader and a second grader and a fifth grader, you're going, "How do I get hold of my teacher? Is it Twitter? Is it Facebook? Is it whatever?" So I think Scott Wortman needs to be involved and I will be talking to him and see if there's a way that we can come up with a plan that shows using the same format across the district.
Well, in our summit group, which is our teachers and management, we are looking at a way to communicate in the building using one platform. And so we think it's going to be remind, we have been, made a final decision, but we, yeah.
My kids use that.
Yeah. So it's one, so everyone knows the same, we're using the same format. We currently use a version of Blackboard. In order to be as efficient as it is we want, we needed to look at a different version where it would cost us some additional dollars. So we think that remind may be a way that we can communicate more efficiently in the building quick.
So you would use remind to send a batch email, for example, or a batch text message to everybody who's in it?
Mm-hmm. Now would be one way to communicate in the building. Now with, with some teachers give that information, they correspond with parents. I mean, I talked to my sister-in-law last night and she was telling me that she got something from remind and my niece said, "What? You have access to that?" You know, so it is a good way.
Yeah, I've been using it as a, you know, trying to help organize cross-country team, but it doesn't quite always do what I think it's supposed to do.
Is there something like Slack or?
So Slack is what Scott Wortman suggested we use, but Slack is more on the same platform as Blackboard, I believe. So something, you got two platforms, and he's not here, but I hope I'm articulating this correctly. Technology people, please jump in, timing if I'm wrong. A quick way to communicate something short and urgent would be a remind. But if you want something more thorough with more information, system-wide, you would use a Blackboard and/or Slack.
Have you slacked in several straight A grants?
Yeah.
And it's been helpful for, especially multiple districts and people don't see these here all the time.
Yeah. I think that's the way Scott, because we investigated after conversation in Summit and I think that's what the difference between.
Remind has a character limit and it tells you in no uncertain terms that you're being too worried.
You really want to get a quick note, right. You want to get a quick note to your staff, a quick note to your parents.
But there's no links, you're not going to attach any documents.
Right, right.
It's, "Hey, don't forget, school pictures are tomorrow."
Right.
Or "Bring your permission slip tomorrow."
Right.
Well, I mean, if you're not, okay, do we have any other Blackboard products that we utilize for anything that we're doing? Stay off that platform then.
You don't like Blackboard?
No, I mean, I can't say that. I can't say that. I have no, no issue with, with Blackboard. But I mean, it's, it's more of a learning management system and it doesn't seem, I mean, if, if what we did in Infinite Campus was Blackboard-based, then yeah, I mean, you start, you're wicking into their documents. I mean, the only issue with Slack is it's, it's a little bit more corporate and I don't know how that would fit into a school setting. So I mean, that's, that would be your focus to...
Well, that's where Scott suggested he wanted to push it in and I said, you know, Scott loves all that new, all this, that new stuff, so.
And I'm raising the issue because parents want us to reduce, not expand, the amount of platforms we're using.
But I think there's some ways, we could talk to, have some conversation with Allison and the team about the way we can use Infinite Campus, right? So we have the suite, the top suite of Infinite Campus. So I'm sure there's some...
Yeah, sometimes I get messages from Infinite Campus. Sometimes it's remind, sometimes it's a podcast, sometimes it's Twitter, sometimes it's something on Facebook. So it's, I can't...
So I think if we define it clearly, do we want a quick message? What do we use? Probably remind. If we want a different type of platform that's more thorough, perhaps Infinite Campus has something. Allison is shaking her hand, yes, that we want to get everyone on board using.
Well, Infinite Campus already has everybody's contact information in. You have all the parents' phone numbers and email addresses and all that, so you can send something out that way.
And Google Classroom has some functionality that pulls in that stuff too.
Right, yeah.
You can communicate through Google Classroom with parents.
So this will be something we will commit to working.
Parents have to sign up.
We'll work on. Yeah, we'll work on and see what that looks like.
Great.
So, you know, fast forward a little bit to some of the work that we'd like to have a Lake Communications Committee figure out. I mean, one of the issues is really who our audience is. And a lot of times we sort of only think about it's our students, but it's a little bit bigger than that. So I mean, I think that kind of goes into, I mean, I've got a beef because the minute you're in 12th grade and you graduate, you're done, you're out. All parent information, you don't stay on, you just go. And that, that doesn't make any sense to me. It's like, okay, you've already been through the system, your, your child has graduated, you're, you're a strong supporter and all of a sudden you're cut out of the loop. So it's like, you know, that's something, I mean, that is not something that can be addressed here, but that's something that needs to, we need to think through. And there's many little nuggets of that, so.
Good.
Okay, last question. What methods are being used to secure infrastructure? Are we applying defense-in-depth practices? I had to look that up. It's a good one. Homeland Security. If so, how, what physical, electronic and procedural layers of defense are we applying? What appropriate controls are we using to address different types of risks? Our first line of defense is probably Neonet. And then from there, we have, obviously that's our firewall, messaging, multiple layers of filtering, custom front-end filtering, Google filtering, device-level software. We've got all the things in place. We, we protect our students. Educating users on the do's and don'ts regarding malice messaging websites and physical protection of personal devices. Gradually generated longer alphanumeric passwords. Your initials in two letters don't usually cut it, but a lot of people just want to do that. Physically limit access to data center and network closets, which we do. Recent deployment of the Dell EMC Data Domain Backup and DR solution. This system is currently being tuned for optimal need and performance. I was at a district four years ago and they were using a tape backup and we just got hired and they said, "Don't worry about the backups, the secretary's going to handle them." Well, they got crypto virus. And one day, teacher walked in who had access to the server and he saw a big red axe and it said, "You've been ransomed." So my tech came in, saw it, panicked, wiped the machine. When you wipe the machine, you wipe the encryption key. Now you're really paying big money. First it's only like $500 the first time, then it went up to $10,000. And we had no backups because the secretary didn't know that tape cleaning, like cleaning tape she had was supposed to be put in the drive. So all the tapes were degraded. They were all dirty. So we had no backups at all. So we were at a point, and this was a small Catholic school, spending $10,000 to get our money back. And this business, I'll call it, because they had a website and they had a help desk and they'd tell you how to pay them in Bitcoin and the whole bit. You call them up, they were very friendly, very nice and I'd say, "But you're stealing our money."
Excellent customer service.
We're doing it nicely. So luckily for the school, we'd had a machine that had crashed and I'd sent the tape drive out to see if it could be recovered and the backups were on there. So we said goodbye and we didn't lose any money, but a lot of schools, schools lose tens of thousands of hours every year because once they get in, they can take everything and they can lock down. I lost all my financials at that school until I found that tape drive. Can you imagine losing our financials? You wouldn't want to be there. So, so yeah, I think we're in good shape there. We do a lot and Brian's top end on that and he's always working on those things. It's good to have a data person who knows what they're doing. Okay, I think that's it for the questions. We have time for the technology. Are there other questions? I'm sorry. Anything else question-wise?
No.
Okay, can we move to the tech plan?
What we have found is that across the country, districts were really looking for some type of framework to implement a technology plan, guidelines, best practices. And Future Ready is one of those great tools that's available to us that gives us a really nice laid-out plan that we can follow and implement. And so the school district has become an approved Future Ready school. And so with that, we had started the process and rolled out some of the first phases of implementation back in the spring. And as we walk through this, we'll walk you through what we have uncovered up until this point and how we're going to move forward with the plan. There's a small video here that just outlines the Future Ready process. I think it's important for us just to watch it to get a really good understanding and then we'll be able to answer any questions and move forward with the plan.
I think we have to recognize that we are already in the 21st century and that we're not preparing kids for the 21st century. We're 15 years in.
I hope to show you what's truly possible in education because what we did was we focused Because what we did was we focused squarely on creating a school that students saw Robinson, that they valued, that they wanted to be a part of. And that was not just preparing them for college and careers, but that was to prepare them to make a difference in this world.
We can learn from them, they can learn from us, we've learned best practices, we've learned what not to do.
The summit is a way for us to collaborate with colleagues, um, talk with various district people. Kind of break down the process so that you don't feel like you're added alone or, or trying to go through the process alone. That collaboration piece with your team and with other districts is powerful.
I think the networking is invaluable. It's, it's good to be here with other superintendents and our friends from around the state to share ideas, uh, in a, in a time and a place where it's safe to do so and just to learn from each other. What is critically important for us to be able to share what we have learned with our colleagues.
Our students are digital learners. We have to get caught up as adults and we're going to provide them to compete in a rapidly growing society.
We've gone to different sessions and we all come back and we're, we're clamoring to share what we learned and that's, that's powerful.
And so when you get an opportunity to come and meet with such dynamic people who, who have already done it before you, where you can learn the lessons that they've already learned. It's just a great investment of time as we continue to work together and learn from one another.
I don't know if that music just serves to want you to sort of jump into this whole new 21st century thing.
So I think we're all in agreement that, um, not only do we need to provide the robust infrastructure and the devices to our students, but we have to have a game plan of how we're going to continue to grow as a district to maximize the use of those devices. And that's really the goal of the Future Ready Plan is, is that we target different areas to make sure that, you know, the devices are doing, uh, they're being used to the best potential that they can possibly be. And our students are, um, gaining from their use. Uh, one of our first steps of this process was to target a team, um, small cohorts of individuals that would work, um, through each one of the different gears as part of the process. As our first stage of assessing, um, the, what's taking place currently in the district. And so these teams were developed, um, uh, for each of the seven gears. And we have representation from each one of them. Frank, do you want to say anymore in regards to the leadership teams?
This is all about assessments. So what we're doing is doing a gap analysis. So as we do an assessment as a leadership team, which is mostly cabinet members, the scores came out and the score might be a 5.6 or a 6. That and the difference between the number 10 was your gap analysis. If you have big gaps, you have problems, you try to close those gaps so you get that problem taken care of. So it shows you the gaps you have, either in your infrastructure, your use of space and time, your data privacy, community partnerships, all those things you look at. Then you pick the two with the biggest gaps. In our case, uh, we did time and space and we did infrastructure. Not that they had the biggest gap because infrastructure wasn't that bad, but since we're making the refurbishing of the middle school a big part of what we're doing this year, I want to make sure we cover those areas, especially space and time. We're looking at some different furniture and some other things we may do there and space and time will help us with that. And then from there, we'll go into curriculum and over the next year and a half, we'll have meetings, we'll talk about closing those gaps and what we need to do and move forward. It's very big, this has been adopted by Ohio in the NEA, it's been used across the country. It's the first really good tech plan I had. When I first ran the first draft, I had 160 pages of data. I said, oh, I went to Mr. Gold and I said, what do I do with this? He goes, you got to cut it down. So we got down to a good spot and now we have what I feel is a good plan.
You can see in the framework, the seven gears that are included. The curriculum instruction and assessment, use of space and time, robust infrastructure, data and privacy, community partnerships, personalized professional learning, and budget and resources. All focusing on a personalized learning environment with the technology. Any questions about the gears? So like Frank had mentioned, the two that we were focused on in 2018, 2019 is the use of space and time and robust infrastructure. And use of space and time is something that we've already started, um, to focus on as we redesigned the classrooms, uh, in the new building. But really, how do we maximize the learning space, um, and the instructional strategies, the best practices in the classroom with the use of the technology? Um, so the physical space definitely becomes something that is important to our teachers. The type of chairs the students are in, the type of, and the styles of the tables. How is the, um, classroom proportioned off, uh, to allow for maybe small group instruction? Uh, so taking those things into consideration, um, we see, uh, the option to really look into balancing that face-to-face time with the students with the online learning opportunities. So once again, how does the classroom accommodate both of those learning strategies in one work environment? And of course, we want to bridge that gap between home and school. So how do we extend that learning also beyond that classroom? And we also targeted robust, the robust infrastructure. Frank, do you want to speak a little bit more to that?
Yeah, uh, our gear visual is teaching and learning will be transformed by our technology devices and our robust, responsive, and safe network infrastructure. With refurbishing of the buildings in the last two years, we felt that was a very important key to what we were doing. So we concentrate on that right now, even though I feel we're pretty good in infrastructure, I want to make sure that we've got that gap completely closed and we're doing all the right things. Okay?
You received a handout today that included, uh, four pages with an overview of the Future Ready Plan. That was an attachment. That gives you a really good idea of just where, um, we are in the process. What's that?
It should be right on there.
It was newly put into Infiniti Campus, but not for docs.
Yeah.
So is this the result of the gap analysis?
It, yes, for the two goals that we're working currently on. Based on the, um, assessment in the four different areas of that gear.
Is it pretty standard that other school districts only tackle, um, yeah, two or three of these a year?
Yes, um, one to two is very ambitious.
Fine, okay.
Do we know anything about the, um, access to internet at home of our students? What percent of our students have internet access at home?
I heard a survey was done, but I don't have the responses from that. We never do a survey.
To my knowledge.
I think I remember filling one out at some point as a parent.
I think that would be an interesting piece of data for us to have. Only because, you know, last slide, you know, talked about access to learning anytime, anywhere. Well, we can't really say that. We don't know what percent it is actually available to until we know that number. And it's important also in terms of the larger picture, there is a move on in the community, as, as many people know, to bring Wi-Fi citywide. And I think that, that having that information would help us understand more about the learning options available to our students so that we could bring that information into the discussion about a citywide, uh, potential for a citywide, uh, internet access.
I know at Delisle, they take all their Chromebooks home. I haven't heard it's been an issue, but they may not get back to us. And you could always go use the library too.
You, you could. I would, I, I, I haven't heard of, of our students bringing their technology home from school before. I'm thrilled to know that at Delisle, that's available.
At Delisle, we do that at the Option Center.
Got it.
Well, there was, when the iPads were first rolled out at the middle schools.
There were some problems.
We had, yes, some interesting things happening.
Chromebooks are not as wanted as iPads were.
Yeah, well, they were being fenced over at the gas station. Another thought besides the Wi-Fi access is the discrepancy between devices. What the children have access to at school versus what they have access to at home. And then the third gap is between what they have access to and what they actually do, which is lie in bed with their phones. So they may actually have, you know, they may have a proper screen where you can see everything in the kitchen or wherever, but they're not going to use it.
I can't.
So then we deal with formatting issues because they're basically looking at everything like that.
I can't control their phones, but the Chromebooks have a program called Go Guardian that I've used in other districts. And it actually manages what they can get to when they're home. So they can't get to sites we don't want them to get to. And that's new this year. We just put it on last week.
So that's resident on the school's device.
Right, right, right.
Right.
Whatever they do, their phone or their computer, I can't, I can't handle that.
Right, of course not. But in terms of how are they doing their schoolwork at home? How are they accessing our software and our programs in their curriculum? You know, it's just like, it's going to be a, a wide range and then it all comes down to it's a kid with a tiny little screen on the phone.
Although the screen might be small, the applications are still available in mobile format. Which makes it a little bit more accessible to the students because it's, it's streamlined for the device.
Right.
Versus them going out to a browser and then trying to format on the mobile device. So that, it does increase productivity, a small percentage.
Yeah, but if you're lying in bed, you're going to sleep anyway.
But we do encounter the keyboard issues and, you know, just being able to complete tasks that might be more in-depth.
Well, it seems to me we need to find ways of measuring how big of some of these problems are. I mean, there's a lot of perceptions out there. And there's this whole concept of the digital divide and then people say, well, no, everybody's got a cell phone. We know that we're delivering everything electronically right now. There's got to be some way that we can measure that. I mean, they're logging into some places, our kids, I mean, maybe the new portal has some way of, you know, measuring that. I mean, that's a single, you know, a single SSI. I mean, if they're, if they're logging in through single sign-on and that's where they are. You know, may, you know, maybe that's, you know, maybe that's a way that we can measure. Uh, but I think we really need to see who's using this and who's not. And we need to see if there needs to be any, um, if we find, I mean, okay, so it's all about the individual student, student achievement. If we find one student out there on some island that is not logging in at night to do their homework, I mean, we need to, we need to find this kind of stuff out.
The data can be two, tiered in two directions too. One is the student use of it. Um, how, are they logging in at the home environment? Are they engaging? But it also can, the data can be geared towards the teachers too. Are the teachers requiring the students to go onto the devices at home and complete activities? So how are they using the Google Classroom environments? Are they making it mandatory that they're completing, um, any of the applications? Like they need 30 minutes a night of doing, uh, math practice or reading practice. Some of those expectations, if they're coming from the classroom to the home environment too, that data could be helpful to see how often teachers are expecting the students to be logging in at night.
Well, I know that in some buildings, the teachers are very careful not to make assumptions about access at home. And so the one-to-one device is working in the classroom, in the building, and then that's a self-contained.
Right, so there's a small print, small percentage of use in the home environment then.
Right, and again, that's, you know, I talked to teachers at two different buildings about the one-to-one initiative and they said, well, you know, we make sure that they have their thing here at school and that all the work is contained within the timeframe of school. We don't want to force them to have to do it at home if they don't have access or they don't have a device or, or, or. And I think that probably changes at different ages. Because there's a point where, you know, you expect your high schoolers have to do stuff at home and they have to have computers and, and internet access.
Um, are, is there any expectation and we'll have an update when, how this is? I mean, I thought I heard six months. I don't know if that was in relation to this.
Yes.
So the committees that are involved in part of the first two gears will continue to meet and put together an action plan of how they will be moving towards achieving their goal.
Okay, and I have action steps actually listed. If you look at the first one, it was six, 6.1 of 10. And I have developed a vice and network inventory, which we've talked about, carefully planned for cybersecurity, which is on my list. And stay current the federal E-rate program when it talks about budget. So those are just action steps that will lead to action plans and other things.
Okay, good.
Okay, this is just a summary. The one that I actually use is about 60 pages long. And I just cut it down because I thought we'd be here till midnight like chili light, so. You did pretty good.
Good, thank you. Questions?
Yes, thank you very much. This is very informative.
It was a pleasure to be able to do it.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Thanks for getting back.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for addressing our very detailed questions.
No, they're very good questions. I was very impressed.
Okay, moving on to the five-year forecast.
Five-year forecast.
I'm happy you included the old one versus the new one.
Well, and I, I have a packet there for everyone that has both the old and the new.
Right.
Some highlights, um, so I did take the liberty of highlighting a couple of things that I wanted to bring up, but I'm sure you'll have some questions as well. Maybe the same. So in front of you, you have the long-anticipated five-year forecast. So I do appreciate the board's patience. So you'll remember that there were a couple of, um, a couple of items. The first being that we were closing out the fiscal year, getting actual numbers for 2018 into the forecast. And once those numbers go in, they change all the numbers moving forward because most of those numbers are, um, are based off of whatever your last year's actual had. Then the second thing was that we, we were tracking significantly, significantly higher on property taxes. And so we wanted to, I'll use one of our former board members' phrases, we're going to tease that out a little bit. And, um.
So when you say tracking higher.
We were, we were receiving, what we were seeing was a significant amount higher in property taxes than what the county had anticipated.
Got it.
Uh, so what happens is the county will, every year at the beginning of the school year, say, um, well, they will provide a Schedule A for us. They will tell us what their estimated, uh, the estimated property taxes will be for the year. Um, they, and they base it on a collection percentage that is historical for your district and also they kind of look at, um, uh, things going on in the county. So, um, I'm going to try to, just in a nutshell, kind of explain what's happened. Because we had several conversations with the county and also spoke with some of our peers in Shaker and Beachwood, South Yulinhurst and Bedford. Just to make sure that this, some of these things that are both ongoing and some that were, were one-time bump in 2018. So in speaking to Shaker, um, I did see this nice little few bullet points that they used to preface our five-year forecast that I liked. Uh, just because, you know, it really stresses, again, that the five-year forecast is a long-term strategic planning document. But also on the second page really talks about how there are some economic forces that can throw off your forecast. Or, or, um, you know, cause some unanticipated things to happen. Um, and in particular, you know, the ones that are affecting us are the continued recovery of the real estate markets that you see they've indicated here. And recovery of the Ohio economy and other market forces. And then the last page, which I liked, which I think is funny because a lot of people will look and say, oh, the numbers are different. Yes, they always will be different. The hope is that they're not significantly different and that if we are doing the five-year forecast on a monthly basis, as this board is asked to be, to do, that you can be on top of those changes so that, you know, it's funny, one of the districts that I spoke with, and I won't name that district, but they have a smaller budget than we did. They still only do their, uh, they would do, they only do their five-year forecast twice a year still, which they're required to do in October and in May. And the, the May forecast came along and they were actually, um, they'd already hired a consultant to go on the ballot for a levy. And experienced some of the property tax bumps that we saw as well. And some other things too, because they hadn't done the forecast since the previous October. And they were able to delay the levy a year, which was good for them. But the superintendent was a little honked off that she already engaged a consultant and paid a little bit of money out of pocket for that, but you know, that's.
Well, doing it monthly does give us a smaller, you know, smaller changes and a better sense of where we're headed.
Agreed, and it keeps it.
So it gives us all a heads up.
And it keeps it out in front, so, so the first.
It's also one of the most important things we as a board need to worry about.
Right, no, absolutely right.
Okay.
So we have the, uh, we have the August, uh, five-year forecast and these documents were all in, 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 um, uh, board docs as well for folks that have been following at home. We have the August 2018 forecast, we have the May 2018 forecast, which is the last one that the board approved. So the, a couple of things. One is that the economy has been recovering and we experienced higher collections than would have been anticipated. So back in the day, we used to collect property taxes about 97%. It used to, you know, vary between 96, 97%. Then we had the recession, then that started to track back up. We were, we were at 89% and moving up. The county estimated 92%, we actually came in a little higher, um, than that in 2018. So we received more property tax collections in 2018 and forward is their expectation, our collections are a little higher. So that increased 2018 and all years subsequent. So you'll remember it was $72 million in taxes. Now we're anticipating about 73. Not only because of a higher collection rate, but the last document that I shared with you is one that was provided by the county, which shows the sexennial reappraisal. So you'll, you'll know that.
And we all received those notices in the mail recently.
You probably did, yes. So in 2000, 2018. Well, you have a, you have a triennial, tri- triennial update where the county comes out and they just kind of do this blanket increase by area. Then you have an actual sexennial update where they send teams out and they, they try to view the properties and try to do a little better job of estimating. try to view the properties and try to do a little better job of estimating. So that's what's just happened in 2018. So you'll see, and I highlighted for Cleveland Heights, University Heights, you know, the city's varied slightly, but the county was kind enough to do this spreadsheet for school districts to show us, especially those of us who have blended cities. So our valuation was previously $1 billion, $45,706,950. And now the new estimated valuation is $1,132,904,080. So that's an 8% increase in, overall in the aggregate for the two cities in terms of, so $87 million. There is something, and we can get into it when we do our finance presentation in October, but you have your voted millage, but you also have what's called inside millage.
Right.
And so inside millage is not subject to House Bill 920, so you have a few mills, every governmental entity does, that will actually increase as these property values increase. You'll see we have 4.45 mills that are inside mills, not voted, that have been in existence probably since the district went into existence. So that brought us, that's going to bring us almost $400,000 more in property taxes on an annual basis than what we were receiving previously. So again, that's built into these out years and why we're at the $73 million level versus, versus the 72 that we had before.
So we have essentially another $1 million--
Correct.
--of potential revenue that we're getting in.
Correct.
Essentially, you're saying half of that is just because of the new property--
Of the inside millage.
And the other half of that is the collection. It's about 92%.
Correct.
Maybe tracking 93, 94, whatever it is.
It's somewhere between 92 and 93.
Okay.
So, because a full percentage would bring us about $1 million.
Okay.
A full percentage change.
So, so, so the deal where a lot of people prepaid or paid early their property tax--
Okay, I'll get there. So, so this, this is, this is kind of one component of all this that went on. So in addition to that, we had this phenomenon where we, you know, the tax code changed, and so the tax deductibility of property taxes is now, or is going to be limited. So what happened is many people who had delinquent property taxes paid them, and many people prepaid their taxes as well. So the delinquencies, we got a big boost in 2018 in our delinquent collections. So that's a one-time increase that we would have expected, or well, over and above what we would have expected, but we would expect to get some amount of delinquencies, but this is a one-time increase for people trying to get that paid so that they could have it as something that was tax deductible. The prepayment is what Shaker put in their forecast as the accordion effect, meaning that they, you know, they call some everything something, whereby people prepaid, then you see in 2019--
A dip was falling, yeah.
--you see the decrease. Then in 2020, you see us back up to the $73 million that we would expect to get and expect to see forward. So, so there was that that went on as well.
So that's a million and a half--
Correct.
accordion effect, shall we call it?
Correct.
Okay, right.
And then the third item that really bumped those, those property taxes up, we had a couple of big settlements at the end of the fiscal year, specifically at Cedar Center, the Whole Foods side. You know, we have residential tax decrease complaints, we really don't do anything with, we become aware of them, but we don't participate in those. Commercial tax decrease complaints, Brins and McIntyre and Seed will always do a cost-benefit analysis for us, and if it's worth our while, we'll participate in those proceedings and try to keep the value of the property as high as possible. And many times, the taxpayer will choose to settle that. And, and in this case, we had a couple of those cases pending with Cedar Center North for multiple years. And so we ended up with some additional money there that it's hard to tell, you know, how those are going to fall or when you're going to get them. So we did see some additional money there, too. So we got a lot of change in property tax for 2018, to the good, and so we're happy about that. But it, it took a lot to kind of unravel what all those pieces and parts were, because remember, we were also looking to see all that money come off for the Severance, Kaiser Severance property.
Those $3 million for Kaiser.
And it's still not off. As of, as of this week, when I spoke with Brian Dunn, who's at the, at the county, you know, he's telling me that they still don't have any formal notice from the courts and whereby they would, you know, deduct that money. So you'll still see that as a reserve here in 2019. But that's kind of all the stuff that happened with property taxes. In addition, that, you know, the, the uptick in interest rates also helped us significantly in our interest on investments.
Doubled our interest return.
Correct. And so we were getting only a half a percent. You know, we're, we're limited as to what we can invest in as a governmental entity. So we were seeing about a half a percent on a lot of our investments, and now we're looking at over two in some cases. So, and we actually brought in meter investments to help us both do cash management a little better, but also to invest a little wiser and take advantage of what we could relative to the bond issue. But while we had them in for the bond issue, we said, you know, let's work through our general fund investments as well. And so you really see that, you know, that's--
Right.
I think it's a combination of both that and significantly rising interest rates. So we do expect that the interest rates will probably, we're hoping, or at least we're assuming for the forecast, that they're going to remain stable at the, at the level they are now. Yet we'll watch that, and if they can, if they continue to increase, we'll, we'll make an adjustment. You do see a reduction in each year only because we're spending down our cash reserves, so we have less to invest in any given point in time, because we're at that point in the levy cycle where we're, you know, spending more than we're bringing in. So we're deficit spending for that. So that's kind of, oh, and, and, and I didn't highlight it, but I will mention, too, that on the miscellaneous revenue for 2018, right under the $657,000 for interest on investments, you'll see that's very high as well. Frank alluded to those biggie rate reimbursements we got back, that's where they are. So they're, they're receipted here in miscellaneous. And in addition to that, what used to be our receipts from federal sources, Medicaid, the, the auditors have now asked that we would receipt those up and under miscellaneous for local sources.
So that's why Medicaid is zeroed out.
Correct.
Okay, I was looking at that going, hmm.
Yes, so that is why, that's why that's zeroed out. And once, once the actual 2016 falls off, I'll remove that category entirely.
Just lose the line altogether.
But right now, for historical purposes, it's there so we can see where it is. Also, the indirect cost rate that Sue Pardee does, where she will charge administrative fees to grants and charges her salary and some other things back. We ended up with two years of indirect cost rate reimbursement in 2018, I think just based on the timing of ODE and when they chose to pay them. So that kind of bumped us up in 2018 there as well. So that's really the bulk of, of, of the big change in the forecast at this point in time. The receipts from state sources are pretty much where we expected them to be, and you'll see I highlighted the expenditures amount. They were very close to what we would have projected. So I, I did that only to point out that, you know, we'd made commitments over the course of the last three years to make some staffing reductions. They were embedded in the forecast, and the savings were, were put in there, and you'll see that, that we're actually, the actual numbers for 18 would show that, that those staffing reductions were actually met. I will note that the additional special education staff for the next school year has been added into this forecast, so that's something that is contained in these numbers for fiscal year 19.
Okay.
The reduction that Frank spoke of in terms of the technology budget is not yet in this forecast. So, you know, we talked about that last week. He's anticipating a 30% reduction, so we're going to work through those numbers, and those will be included.
And that would be in capital outlay, or where would that go?
Well, it would be both in purchased services--
I see.
--and in, and in capital outlay. So the actual equipment and technology would be the capital outlay, and the purchased services would be the consulting fees for like Black Box and some of those other firms that they use for some of that kind of thing. So the good, the good is that we now show the positive cash balance in fiscal year 20. We're at 4.7 million. We, you know, the, the ODE, I know Talisa got the letter as well as I did, because they closely monitor the five-year forecast, and they'd already written us saying, hey, in May, you're showing a deficit. You know, what are you going to do about that?
And you said, wait a minute, wait a minute.
It's like, hey, no, no. No. We, we're, we're not going to have that, which we've been talking about. So, you know, that shouldn't be a surprise, although since the property taxes were a surprise, but that's-- So we're, we're now at the 4.7 positive, and, and I think that the next phase of the conversation is going to be then, you know, the hope that we would, would increase that number even further, because now that we have a positive cash balance in '20, but we've also pulled in now fiscal year '23 into a cycle, you know, where the deficit spending is even larger.
Right, yeah.
So you have to consider that when you're doing your millage models and what kind of millage you're going to end up with the next time we're on the ballot for a levy, and when we want to get it back, when we want to get numbers down to what would be a reasonable amount, I think we still have some work to do. And, and I think that that's one of the things that we're going to be discussing with you as we move forward.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think it's pretty obvious that when we passed the last levy, it was for three years.
Correct.
I mean, that's what we, that's what the budgets were based on, that's what we told the community, but it's what, most important is what the budgets were based on. Looking at this and looking at sort of the conservative spending that we, as districts, district has done, I mean, we could really safely say that we don't need to go on in that third year. We could wait another year.
I think we can, we can say that, safely say that. I think the, the question is, yes, you know, what, what, what further actions do we take to get the number down to something that is, you know, something that would be reasonable? Because if you were to run a mil mod on these numbers right now, it, it would be, it would be probably higher than you'd want it to be.
Yeah.
But yes, I, I would agree. I think that that's doable. I think that, you know, we've had some conversation, both with the, the reductions in the technology budget that need to go in here, but also with, you know, we've, we've, we've anticipated stable staffing here.
Yeah.
But if we were to anticipate some attrition or, or those kinds of things, too, and built that into the forecast, you know, the good thing is, as you can see with the property taxes, the earlier that you have any of these changes, whether it's an increase in revenue or a decrease in expenses, you get multiple years of savings at compounds.
The bigger effect it has, yes.
And so that's where we always try to say, you know, the first day of the next levy is, is, you know, that right after you pass the last one. And that's why when we made the changes and the, and the, the changes to the expenses and staffing along the way here, we've reaped the benefit of multiple years of those savings that's helped us get, you know, positive in this fourth year. So we will continue to monitor the, the property taxes. I mean, that's still, you know, we still want to make sure that that's going to play out exactly the way the county is telling us that that's going to happen. And also, you know, the interest rates, we'll keep an eye on, too. And, and, you know, as we said, the good thing is, we're bringing this monthly, we're monitoring it monthly, and we can make the changes, and, and we will do that. So we're on, back on schedule. I mean, obviously, we have this one for you for approval tonight, but you're going to see a forecast now again on September, the first meeting is September, and it'll be the first regular meeting now. We'll be back on schedule for that.
Right.
Is there anything else I can? Yeah, sure.
I'm, I'm just curious, and, and the answer to this is don't hold your breath, but the E-COT just pretty much lost their last--
They did.
--their last chance.
Yeah.
And, and so where do you think, so if refunds were to be offered, is there, has there been talk? I've heard both, that money is probably just going to go back into the state general fund for education purposes. I've also heard talk that districts would be reimbursed based upon their loss. Have you heard anything about that?
The conversations I've heard are probably the former rather than the latter, that the state is going to claim that they will, you know, take that money and then disperse it to districts through the formula, which probably isn't going to help us, but I don't know if maybe if you've heard something different.
Nope, nope.
This is, this is a long fight.
Yeah.
They got to pierce a corporate veil in order to get those monies.
Right.
There's going to be a lot of people that are going to be fighting--
It's going to be a probate.
Yeah, and it's not going to be--
And it's a divorce.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like the monies are sitting there that they can, like, claw back. I mean, there's going to be, I mean, I think we've seen litigation, not necessarily like this, that goes on for years, and the powers that be want to hold on very tight to their money, at least they think it's their money. So they're going to hold on, I mean, good, good question, but I think we're going to be well-retired as board members before--
Speaking of retirements, that was my second question.
Yes.
Have you recently run any sort of, and you probably haven't, because nobody's probably asked you to, run any sort of an analysis of, are we at a place in terms of, you know, the overwhelming majority of our expenses, our staff? Some districts periodically, it is in their financial best interest to offer buyouts if you have a very senior staff. I have no idea the distribution of, of the seniority of our staff. Are we at that sort of point? Have we done those before?
We have run those analyses before, you know, there are firms that, that do that. And I want to say it's probably been a good three years plus that that's, since that's happened. And at that time, it was one of those, you know, the, the cost benefit wasn't there for the district.
Yes.
I think it's, it's probably time to do that again. You know, we, we know that a lot of our, and I have not seen current statistics, although HR has access to that. I think the last time I saw it would have been when we were in negotiations last, because we always show where everyone is, so that we kind of, can kind of determine, you know, how many people are stepping, where they are on the scale. We do have a senior staff, or at least we did at that time. The, the retirement system really didn't help us--
Right.
--because we would have seen a lot of those staff retire at 30 years, but now STRS, you know, did the whole 35-year--
Have they incentivized, I think it was 2015? If you were close, you got out.
Correct. And otherwise, people are hanging in for another five years because they have to get that 35 years. So, so, yeah, but I think that it will be, there will be a time for that analysis again. You're absolutely right. And we'll get that data and get it to you, too.
One other little question that's completely different. The beginning cash balance--
Mm-hmm.
--for fiscal year 18 was, the actual was significantly higher than what was budgeted. Is that because the Kaiser didn't go out?
No, that's the, those encumbrances. So you see the $2, $3 million of fiscal year 17 encumbrances--
Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's almost the same number.
Yeah. Coincidentally, it is, but--
Okay.
And those are, for the viewers at home, you know, those are purchase orders that are still open at the end of the fiscal year--
Got it, right.
--at our obligations of the district. So, yeah. It, it did coincidentally turn out to be nearly, within $100,000, the same number one year and the next. But that's a good question, and I should have pointed that out.
So those carried over from the previous year?
Yes, those have carried from the previous year. Although we do try to close as many of them as possible. Okay, so--
We're going to look at this monthly?
Yes, so you'll see it again in two weeks. I'm not sure whether there will be changes to it or not, but we've had that situation before.